All right. Calling tonight's meeting back into session. Prior to this meeting, we were originally called to order into closed session. And now we can begin our revised meeting agenda for tonight. And in tonight's meeting, we're going to start with a presentation on the Mental Health Crisis Counselors Pilot Program and Memorandum of Agreement with Montgomery County Department of Health and Human Services, followed by our regular 7:30 schedule, which I will touch upon at that time. But I want to make sure that we are able to allocate the necessary time to our 6:30 presentation item. So with that, I'm going to call forward our ARPA manager. I will get you all set up.
Excellent.
Button, all right.
Wonderful.
Well, last time I was in front of you, I didn't know where the copier was yet, but I've found it. So hitting the ground running from there. Anyway, it's a pleasure to be in front of you tonight to talk about this very exciting initiative. That's been many years in the making and hopefully getting to the finish line of actually implementation here. But just want to make sure that our two Montgomery County representatives are online with us. I guess that's the first thing. We have both Dornay Hill with us tonight. She's the Senior Administrator for Crisis Intake and Trauma Services for the Department of Health and Human Services for Montgomery County. And Beth Tabacznik, Manager of the Montgomery County Crisis Center.
Real quick, we don't have, our screens are not on. Sorry, we're dealing with a slight technical issue. Excellent. And just want to make sure that our Montgomery County colleagues are on the Zoom.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, there's Beth.
Great, see Beth? Wonderful. All right. Did we get everyone online?
All right, Beth is Dornay there with you?
Yeah, Beth is here. I'm here. Let me see if Dornay has joined us.
Okay, I can, I can start to walk through the MOA if that makes sense. Yeah.
No worries.
Yeah.
I think we're good.
Got a good joke?
You don't need a copyright strike. We're, we're.
If we must die, let it not be like hogs hunted in pinned in the glorious spot. While round to spark the mad and hungry dogs making their mock at our cursed lot. If we must dial, let us nobly die so that our precious blood may not be shed in vain. So that even the monsters we defy shall be constrained to honor us.
All right, council members, thank you for the intermission. Wonderful. Thank you. I think we have everyone.
We're all here. All right, well, welcome, Dornay and Beth. So before you tonight, provided in your packets is the memorandum of agreement. This has been a little over a year long process to get this sort of negotiated into where it is now. There was some delays in the third party review of the document, which is why it was pushed back a little bit. This MOA sort of outlines the key responsibilities of both parties between Tacoma Park and Montgomery County. And its purpose is to address pressing mental health and related needs in the Tacoma Park community. It's a pilot, two-year pilot program, which will hire two mental health clinicians to respond to service calls for neighbors experienced mental health crisis in Tacoma Park. The development started, as I talk about in the cover memo, started in 2020, although it may have started a bit before that with the police department sort of having internal dialogues about how they can better serve individuals in mental health crisis that they come into contact with. The Task Force to Reimagine Public Safety also came forward with a recommendation for this type of program. This program is being funded with $600,000 in ARPA expenditures. $250,000 of those a year are slated to go towards salary with the remaining $100,000 for admin costs, some salary contingency built in there as well, as I'm assuming there's been some COLA increases since the original projections were put together. And also, which I think is a really important part of this, is the county would, after the end of the pilot program, if the community was interested in moving forward with this program into the future, it would be folded into the county's general fund budget at no cost to the city, other than continuing to supply the office space. So the MOA specifically, it addresses that these will be county employees hired, although the city of Tacoma Park can be part of the hiring process. But they will maintain payroll, all benefits, workers' comp insurance, those types of considerations. The employees will also have access to the county's general database, their peer support, their training, all of those resources. The MOA also talks about a steering committee, which is put together by Montgomery County leadership, as well as city management. And they will meet court, the talks about that they will meet quarterly to talk about how the program's going, start to look at data. This is a program that's going to bring forward a ton of data about addressing service, service calls. And then the county will also, will also train Tacoma Park Dispatch to the extent they're not already trained. So when you, when someone calls up 911 and it's diverted to the Tacoma Park Dispatch Center, they'll be able to understand, okay, does the person have, have a weapon? Is there an imminent threat to public safety? Is it appropriate to just send a mental health clinician to the scene? Or is it more appropriate for a co-response model whereby the police department would come and assess, evaluate the circumstance to make sure that there's no imminent threat to public safety? This could be if, you know, the individual has a history of violence or a recent arrest for domestic violence at the scene, just to ensure that the site is safe before the clinicians take over the scene at that point. And then, once the contact is made, clinicians will provide a clinical assessment for the individuals. They'll provide follow-up treatment. They can refer them to the vast services that the county provides. And also track their progress, be an advocate for them and their families. And I will just say, anecdotally, we, in Vermont, Burlington had a very similar model that they started in 1999 called Street Outreach. It was very successful. And in South Burlington, we started a, a inter-local agreement for something called Community Outreach, based on that model, which is very similar and incredibly successful. After the initial pilot program, every other municipality and police department in the county wanted to be involved because of how, how much of a better service it provides for the community, as well as the, the insights and the education that officers were able to gain from interacting with these professionals. So with that, I'm turning it over to Dornay or Beth. If there's anything additional you guys want to add before we kind of go to QA.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Just want to thank you so much for having us here. We are very excited about this collaboration and to have this ability to do this intensive behavioral health work in, in your community. I know that we're present there now, but to have this more intimate relationship where we're closer and can respond quicker, we're really excited for that opportunity. And like they said, we are, I'm the Senior Administrator for All Crisis Intake and Trauma Services for Montgomery County Government. So we do have several different crisis models. So the Crisis Intervention Team Co-Responder with the Police and a therapist, that's just one of our models. We still have our Mobile Crisis Outreach Teams, which are a independently licensed therapist with a peer or, or another clinician that will respond if there is no imminent risk of harm or weapon involved. And that's what we're speaking of when we can do the education. We have a triage and dispatch protocol that we've set up with Montgomery County Police Department, Emergency Command Center, as well as HHS and other entities have worked together to create that using some information we've gathered from Reimagining Public Safety, as well as we had a consultation come in from Kahoots and RI International, which does the Crisis Now model. So we've kind of taken the best practices from CIT International, Kahoots, and Crisis Now and incorporated them into our service delivery models. So we're ready for questions whenever you are.
Great. Thank you so much. Councilmember Small.
Thank you, Mary. I, I think this may also have import to Chief. So Chief, if you want to come up to the front, it would be cool. So I appreciate the nature of this model and the importance, the relative importance of it. And I wanted to speak a little, I wanted you guys possibly to speak a little bit more to the additional nexus of economic stress, dangers, drug use, and the need to have such a nexus. Unfortunately, both the reality of living in a relatively affluent community, it doesn't pay a lot of attention to that, and also living next to some border communities that are in stress constantly means that we see a lot of those things, even at the like immediate business centers. And there's a lot of businesses that aren't putting the efforts into ensuring that those areas are safe. And so that means that people can come farther along in the process without concern. And so we see a little bit more perhaps than other people do. And so I was wondering if both the mental health people and Chief could talk to that a little bit.
Councilmember Small, that's a great point. I, I've stressed it multiple times, not just in the context of this pilot program, but prior to that, what a desperate need in our community we needed for mental health counselors. Now, we've taken multiple other steps. We've gotten our officers advanced crisis intervention training, so they're much better at handling these calls. But there is a large segment of our population that suffers from mental health issues. It affects their families. A large majority of our calls for service are related to mental health and substance abuse issues. So I cannot stress enough, and I've said it multiple times in this forum and other forums, that this is desperately needed. I think this is a great program. As I've stressed continuously, our goal is to try to divert as many calls as possible away from law enforcement response. And Dornay can talk specifically about the triage of those calls, as well as, as well as what would trigger a co-response model and what would trigger a sole clinician with a partner model.
And then before you guys go to this, the, the other concern that people have had historically about this is the proximity potentially that office to the actual police station, particularly after the build out. And I'm not, I don't have that concern, but I, if you guys could address that as well, that'd be awesome.
So I can state that we have, the Crisis Intervention Team, and Beth, you can jump in, with Montgomery County Police Department has been in existence for approximately 15 years. I think it was 90, in the 90s, Beth, is that right?
We started the CIT training in 2000, exactly.
So we, and all, go ahead. Yes. So we also have currently a Rockville City CIT therapist as well. And all of these, and all of these therapists sit within the police department. It makes it easier for co-response, for sharing of information, for planning of who's going to take what lead and what role with these cases. Because the therapists are a part of Montgomery County Government, they have access to our electronic health records and mental health case management records that the police department would not. So we might have information such as, they already have a provider. They were just at the Crisis Center yesterday. Oh, they're a part of Drug Court. And these are people we might want to reach out to before we go on scene to figure out if we can get some other supports in place of what's needed. So having that co-location actually is beneficial to the team and to, to the case and how we work, how we really adjust the client's needs as a whole. And Beth can talk about CIT International. We go the state locally and we go to the international conference. And all of the therapists and peers are stationed with police departments and fire rescue or Emergency Command Center that do this type of work. Go ahead, Beth. Right. Oh, sorry.
Sorry. Go ahead.
Go ahead. And I just want to say that we, and also, even though we're in police departments, we are in the community seeing the clients. We are not sitting in an office having them come to us. We are in cars going out to the homes, to the businesses, to the street corners, to the libraries, schools, wherever we're needed, and doing these assessments on site. So it's not as though the clients are coming into police station and have that level of intimidation or concern that they're being interviewed and assessed in a police station. We're actually in their environment, going to them. Go ahead, Beth, I'm sorry.
As Dornay was saying, CIT International, our, our partnership with the local police department started in 2000 when we started to provide the partner training with MCPD and the other local police departments. We've continued that through this year and we've had a very, we, we've had a very successful partnership. As the chief was saying, many Tacoma Park police officers have attended the training and have been strong participants in the training through, through the years. So we've been really, you know, we've been really encouraged by the, the strength of the partnership with Tacoma Park in particular. I actually, prior to starting this position as manager of the Crisis Center, I was assigned to the MCPD, to the MCPD's Crisis Intervention Team as their consulting clinician. And so I have a lot of familiarity with the strength of this model as well. But I just wanted to step back and speak to the question posed in terms of mental health concerns in the community. I, I think, I don't think that we can overstate how impacted our community has been over the past few years by the rise in mental health and substance use needs. We have a tremendous, we have, you know, we, we've had the knowledge that over 20% of the population, you know, lives with some sort of diagnosable mental health condition even prior to the, you know, to the past few years. But with the extraordinary circumstances over the past few years, we've seen that number rise exponentially. Even persons without previously diagnosed mental health conditions have, have, have developed, either developed or have been impacted in some way by a mental health concern or a substance use concern. We've seen, we've seen the rise in substance use concerns as well. And I'm saying this to, to emphasize that it is really important that we take a multi-pronged approach to addressing behavioral health concerns in our community. There are, there's really, there's really no singular way that this, that we're going to be able to combat the needs of our community around these issues. We really have to look at each and every best practice to make sure that we're, we're serving the needs of our, of all of our community members.
Thank you very much for your passionate, well-credentialed and highly professional answer. Real talk, both of you, well, all three of you, technically.
Councilmember DeBala?
Yes, thank you. This, this is great. I, I know it may feel to you like a long time coming, but here it is. And I'm very excited, very pleased. And thank, it's, it's wonderful to meet you, Dorn and Beth, by remotely. I, I have a couple of specific questions about the agreement. Just to make sure that I understand it, this, this looks exactly like, from the ARPA point of view, which is where the county, the city council came in. This looks like exactly what we were looking, looking to try. And this is, this is wonderful. The question that I have has to do with the two years. And it says that, that, that it's a two-year agreement, but clearly it's going to take some time to hire. The first task is to hire folks. I assume you talked about making a more than two-year agreement to a quarter or to, in order to allow for two full years of service. So my, my question is, how did that play out? What, how did, where did you wind up?
Yeah, I, I would say the, I mean, this document has gone on over so many different iterations with, in terms of the dates in it. I don't know if the, the county, I don't know if that conversation occurred prior to my involvement.
I think the two years is based upon the actual grant that was received. And so it would not be difficult. What we've done with other municipalities is that we just do an addendum that would increase the years. Like we started out with Rockville City as one year, and it took that entire year, as you stated, to hire a clinician for that position. And literally, the week before she started, it ended, and we did an addendum to, to extend it for another five years. So that's not an issue on, on the county's part to extend it beyond that.
Okay, great.
And I, I could just confirm that, that was the intention, was once we've started, the dates are fluid. So some of the dates that were in the original MOU, we're, we're thinking that we were going to start six, seven months ago. So those dates will be adjusted. We're hopeful that, that we'll be able to push it out because we can use those funds, I think, ARPA funds into, what is it, 2025, 2026? 2026. So we're confident that we can, we can, we have enough money to be able to cover it for that two-year period.
Right. So keep going till we run out of money. That sounds good.
And, and I will just add, so you're correct, I'm looking at the, the term provision 17.1 right now. And it does talk about it's two years from the commencement date, which is supposed to start at May.
Well, then, then we're good.
May, May 1. So it may, I, I don't think that would be a substantive change that we can update. We've had to update the dates, you know, X number of times already.
Great, great. The other question I have is about the steering committee. Do we have, it says who the two representatives from the city would be. Do we have any idea who the three county representatives would be? Would it be people such as Dorn and Bath, or would it be? Yes, I'm seeing shaking heads. Yes, yes. People who have the expertise and good, but thank you.
Yes, yes. And our Behavioral Health and Crisis Center Chief, Dr. Santiago, would be on the committee.
Thank you all for the work that it's taken to get to this. And I'm, I'm really excited for the start of this program. Thank you.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes, thank you for the presentation. Thank you for the presentation. I know that the community has been looking for this to happen. I, I, I don't know a lot about the specifics, but I do understand that there's some, there's competing model here. And you talked, you briefly talked about co-location. Is that, is there, is there a question about whether some, some pluses and minuses of not collating, co-locating counselors with police and pluses and minuses with co-locating? I, I just want to understand what might be considered controversial or not.
Sure. So we don't see it as controversial. I, I know in the community, it's seen that way to some people. We see it as, like I said, the pluses of it are the collaboration, the proximity, the ability to partner and really figure out who's on first, who's on second, who will be the lead. You know, do the police need to do more of the talking or the therapist? What's the history of the case for the client's mental health and behavioral health history? I know that there are some concerns about, that I've heard throughout all, many communities about if the police respond with the therapist, who does the talking most? Is there an intimidation by the police being there? And what we can tell you is that from our model at the Crisis Center, Mobile Crisis Outreach, we've went from responding without the police, going always with the police, and now we have a hybrid model. And we see there are benefits to both of them. We don't see one is better than the other. We feel like each situation, taking on its merit, has a benefit for each model. And there are times that Mobile Crisis or the police don't go, we'll send our steer program, which is a stop triage, engage, evaluate and refer. And that are, those are our peer support specialists that give out the Narcan Leave Home Kits. They respond if someone has an overdose. They do the follow-up calls to try to engage somebody to the point of wanting to seek treatment. We also have our homeless outreach programs for the street homeless and for persons who are at risk of homelessness. So we also use those partners as part of our crisis continuum as well. So there's several different components that we can add. That's not just police or therapists, based upon the calls that we receive and the services needed.
Well, thank you. It, it sounds like you've had good, good experience with this co-location, various experiences. Are there communities or models where a non-co-located, I mean, are, are there communities that do it differently then? Do you have any experience with that or just?
Beth, to your knowledge, I think at this point, everyone in Maryland either has the co-responder model of police and therapists or just therapists and peers. And there are some communities across the United States that do a therapist and EMS together or do, you know, EMT with the therapist or EMT with a peer. So there are quite a few models, like the Kahoots model, that have different variations of the teams. But we're, we're actually very fortunate, Montgomery County, that we have such a robust crisis continuum that we're able to kind of be very in tune with what the, together as what the clients need and, and call upon the best team to respond.
Thank you.
Sure.
Councilmember Hansa?
Thank you so much. I've been extremely excited to hear more about this program moving forward based on mental health conditions we're seeing in our community and even in my own neighborhood, a part of the city. based on mental health conditions we're seeing in our community and even in my own neighborhood, a part of the city. I, I, I just wanted to, if you could maybe help enlighten me, and I hope it will be interesting and useful to some other members of our community about, you talked about the crisis continuum. Can you just speak a little bit more to, to where people who need further interventions would get referred? You know, there would be the crisis and potentially, I've had people call me even before a crisis has ensued and said, we just want to alert you to, you know, someone has gone into a state of mental crisis, but they haven't actually, nothing's happened yet. You know, what, what can we do? If you could just help me understand better what within this physical geographical area would be the outreach model in terms of where people would go to after they met with you or even if somebody alerted you before a crisis happened. Thank you.
Sure. So as a senior administrator over Crisis Intake and Trauma Services, I kind of, not kind of, I do oversee the entire front door for the mental health system for the county. So we have access to behavioral health services. And that is a program where we do assessments for uninsured, underinsured and eligible for insurance or state insured clients. And we do a dual diagnosis assessment. We could do them in person. We can do them virtually. We can provide transportation to our site. And we really want the community to start using them more because we're hopeful that if we can catch people who aren't quite in crisis, we can get them linked to providers before the crisis happens. We have outpatient mental health clinics at the Crisis Center and access behavioral health services. We provide, you know, short-term brief therapy. We have psychiatrists that we can do bridge appointments to get someone medicated until they're able to get to a permanent provider in the community. We have our mobile crisis and outreach teams that go all across Montgomery County, which is 24/7. The Montgomery County Crisis Hotline, 2407774000 is 24/7. 988 is also a talk, text and chat line that is answered by every mine, but we also do a lot of crossover and warm handoffs between each other. So if someone just wants to talk and figure out where they are, what's going on, what their need may be, maybe they're not in crisis. They can always call 988 and they can start a conversation via chat, like I said, chat, text or talk. And then they definitely pass people over to us who are in imminent risk of danger or who need, who need a higher level of intervention. The Walk-in Crisis Center, which is at 1301 Picard Drive in Rockville, is also 24/7. We provide bus tokens, cab rides, and alternate ways to get to us. We know that we're central to the county, but that's not central to someone who doesn't have the means to get there, right? It's only central if you have the means to get there. So we do provide transportation for people to come into us. We have four residential crisis beds. Those are beds that are stepped down from psychiatric hospitalization or in lieu of being hospitalized. And those beds we, you can do in 10-day increments and we average about 20 days per client. And they see psychiatrists, therapists, peers. We do case management, discharge planning, and we try to restore them to a functioning level so they can return to the community safely without being hospitalized or having to return to the hospital.
I do have a quick follow-up question on that. Thank you so much because you actually addressed a couple of the questions that I have. So to the point that was raised earlier about the co-location, I think that it is even more important now that we have 988 in addition to 911 and making sure that just from a logistical perspective, those calls are coordinated in a way through dispatch to ensure that the proper response is happening within our city. So it was really helpful to hear you speak about the 988 because even though someone may call 988, it may be a situation where a mental health issue may warrant a police presence as well, which I think is really helpful. So it sounds like that the mental health counselors that would be a part of the CIT would have the ability to also work with dispatch around 988 calls that might be pertinent in the city of Tacoma Park. Is that?
Absolutely. And we actually, over the last year and a half, have done a lot of work with Emergency Command Center. We actually took joint CIT dispatch training. So Crisis Intervention Team International has a, a mental health dispatch special training that we actually got a grant for and did together so that our crisis hotline as well as dispatch were trained in the same language and de-escalation for the phone calls and information gathering. We, we also have, it's still in a draft form, but we have done work with, and then we're also working on community events to help explain the difference between 911, 988 and the Crisis Center. And when you call who and who you should call, regardless, you know, the community is going to call the number they're most comfortable with, the number they know. So internally, we have a triage system that we've been using now for approximately six months. Maybe a little bit more where internally, we know how to do the warm handoffs and what calls go where. And we actually have a monthly meeting and data of how many calls get transferred to which program from the other programs.
Thank you. And, and definitely it would be helpful. A lot of that education would need to happen in the city as well, especially as we're, we're moving to this model. And then another point, which has been an issue for, for many, many years, is the location of the actual referral in crisis centers, right? So we have in the city, it's, if someone is suffering from a, a, a crisis, a mental health crisis and you're able to stabilize them enough to not be an immediate harm to themselves or others, to expect them to get in an Uber, get in a cab and go all the way out to Rockville to, to get to that next handoff is, we've seen firsthand is not really something you would expect to happen, right? So has there been any conversations around having more down-county locations for that short-term crisis intervention that may be needed for someone who maybe needs a 23-hour whole situation?
Right. So funny you say that. We are actually in the process, hopefully that you guys know, we have a community forum tomorrow with Rockville City. And we are in the process of, so at the Crisis Center, we're, we're opening in the next few months, a four-bed restoration stabilization room. That will be for fire rescue and first responders to drop off clients who are having a mental health or a substance abuse crisis. Instead of going to the emergency room, the larger Restoration Center is right now proposing to be built where the pre-release center is and, and the jail on seven locks. So there are many community events about that. And I sit on those committees as well. And I think that there have been conversations at some of the hospitals about finding facilities that maybe aren't currently being used to do a down-county Restoration Center as well. It's in infancy, but there has been lots of conversations and pushes to have a down-county Restoration Center as well.
So I just want to put in a shameless plug because that is something that the city of Tacoma Park has really been trying to identify locations for that to happen. And you happen to have a vacant hospital. So
Correct.
We sure do. And we're well-connected allegedly.
So, so definitely we'll be tuning into the meeting tomorrow if we can. If you could pass that information on, it would be very helpful for us to be able to listen in to, to learn more about the process for creating more of these types of intervention locations. Because I think as the community demand for mental health services increases, it's, it's, it's going to be really important to make sure that it's easily accessible for folks.
Absolutely.
So that'll be critical. And last question, I'm so sorry, Councilmember Hanzak. Youth. Youth. So there's been such a huge need for youth mental health, youth interventions. And, you know, the, the approach for youth is, is very different from an approach that we would likely need to take for, for adults. Does your model account for, for that piece in how we may be able to better serve youth in our community through this model?
Absolutely. So our mobile crisis outreach and crisis intervention team therapists, they see the lifespan. We see from ability to talk until ability, not to talk. So we see the entire lifespan. We are trained in several different models. Zero Suicide for Adolescents was our most recent training that we did for all of our staff about assessing suicide risk in children. We've seen a high rise in our substance abuse in teenagers. We have two special therapists that do dual diagnosis for adolescents and teenagers, which includes referral and case management. We've seen a huge increase in the numbers. They've been averaging about 90 clients a month for two therapists. So you can imagine that's just as much as we see. We know the need is greater. We're also looking at the MRSS model, which I'm not going to remember what that stands for. But it is a mobile response for adolescents and their families. So it has a peer and the peer is doing more of a parent coaching. And the therapist is doing more of the assessment of the child. And it's a wraparound model that we're looking to incorporate as part of our mobile crisis. Actually, our crisis continuum in general. So the state of Maryland is pushing for that and is, and working with different entities to try and get some funding to get, get some positions that we can have the ability to hire and, and add that extra specialty to our continuum of crisis services as well. So we're trying very hard to get that up and running. We understand the need, but we definitely see across the lifespan. And we've made quite a few referral sources in the community that, that we prefer our adolescents to. And we have been working with our, you know, the larger Montgomery County Council and our chief and director at trying to look at ways to reopen some of the, the inpatient adolescent substance abuse units that closed. A lot of them closed because the need wasn't there. But now we're seeing the need is there. So we're trying to figure out some different places that could possibly have that type of programming that we could advocate with the state for billing and, and, and those types of things to get programs willing to open their doors and take in the clients that are, that are, are in need right now.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Hanzak, I'm sorry.
Thank you. No, you touched on social services counselor to work in with you. Do you have staff? I said, no. And our city doesn't have anybody. So I'm, I'm, I'm just so happy to have you. But I'm, I'm going to give a couple of examples and I'm going to ask you for that because I, I want to try to imagine with you what, what we can anticipate. So what, and be very general, no one's going to know who I'm talking about. So in general terms, I've had, for example, some, some, someone who has said up, back and forth that they might be on the verge of committing suicide. And then the person seems fine again. In a case like that, besides the obvious, the 988 number that we have there, what would you, knowing that the person lives out in the Tacoma Park community and is very far from Rockville, but they seem to sometimes manage and sometimes not, and this is not uncommon, right? What kind of care would you be able to provide them as the, you know, through this particular service that we're talking about in the police station? We have, to my knowledge, we have a behavioral health center that's in the primary care health center. I'm looking at my incumbent colleagues in the Adventist Annex Building. I'm not aware of others.
Yeah, but I just want to clarify that that is a primary care, primary care office, which offers for its patients who have mental health needs, a tele, telehealth suite to, to interact. So it's, it's a different co-location model of primary care along with mental health. So it's not the same as someone who is in crisis could walk in and receive treatment per se.
Okay. So that wouldn't be a place that they would get referred to. That's one of the things I wanted to clarify.
To you is that the same thing that the larger county council does for the county? They immediately email Beth or I the first time that someone in a correspondence says that they are feeling suicidal, or if this goes on, I'm going to kill myself immediately. And we will provide our information to everyone on this immediately email us. And we immediately start researching names, address, any information that we have. And we will immediately have a mobile crisis team respond to where that person is. And if we can't find them, we will reach out to them and figure out where they are and meet with them. And that's how we handle those situations.
Okay. So let's take a less acute situation, such as someone who has a known quite serious mental health condition that when medication is not taken, tends to go in the decline and can lead to a whole array of situations. So again, recently alerted to adult person with such conditions. Again, what could these services being in our community do in that kind of a situation, which is really altogether too common? Knowing again, that this person either lives with or in and around our own community, but maybe doesn't want to seek care as many adults who have stopped their medication. That happens a lot.
Right. So then in that, in that model, you would call, which we haven't marked out yet, I'm assuming you would call, you know, the, whatever the number for the CIT team would be at Tacoma Park and give the information to the clinician or dispatch, whoever is going to take the call. And then we would take over and even though someone may not want to engage, we're trained in engagement and, and rapport building. So even if we go out today and they say, no, we're not just going to stop there. We're going to go back out the next day or we're going to send a peer out to keep trying to engage. We might send the person's homeless and mental, has a mental health issue. You might send somebody out, you know, from the, from the homeless programs to give them food or just to give them a bottle of water or blanket and keep making that interaction and engagement in hopes that at some point, someone will be able to build a relationship with this person that they can get them to come in and actually talk and seek help.
So, so the place that they would come in and actively seek help would either be with the two people that would be in our station here or somewhere outside of the community. I just want to
Correct, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Correct.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Beth.
I just wanted to add, I, because I have timely examples, you know, I had, I actually had two individuals just today reach out to me sort of out of the blue. And these individuals were people who I'd worked with when I was with this, you know, when I, when I was assigned to the crisis intervention team with MCPD. And both of those individuals, you know, fit that definition that you're talking about in terms of initially, you know, now they, sorry, my puppy's in the background. Initially not, you know, not interested in mental health treatment. They'd actually reached out to the, they reached out to the police department because they were interested in, in different levels of police service because of their, their, you know, specific needs. And they weren't necessarily interested in mental health services at all. Because I worked with the police, this is, I think, one of the benefits of co-location and, you know, under one of the models that we use. Because, because I worked with the police department and because I was co-located with them, I was able to work on, you know, on engagement. And as Dornay said, it's a good process and, and it worked really effectively in this case. We were able to get both individuals into services. I mean, the types of services are, you know, usually that we, we assess their a variety of different factors in terms of their clinical needs, their resource, you know, what resources are available to them, their, you know, their, their specific treatment needs. We were able to get both of those individuals connected with services. We got them both connected with housing, which they didn't have at the time that I, I began to engage with them. And, you know, and these are two examples of situations where, you know, even, you know, years later, they're still reaching out to me just to say, I'm doing okay. Thank you. You know, I really appreciated what you did. And, and, and I think this can happen in your community as well. The clinicians will be very visible to your community members and they'll get to know them.
Great. Councilmember Fulcher?
Hi, thank you for coming and answering lots and lots of questions. I was wondering as far as your sort of community, public outreach, you know, what have you done in order to make the communities that you're working in right now, like the city of Rockville? And then also your center in Montgomery County more known to the public?
So that's why we're, that's what we've actually changed the name to Mobile Crisis and Outreach Teams. We go to community events, carnivals, school PTA meetings. All community centers, if they're having something, any type of fair, we are there. So we want people to know who we are and what we can offer. And when I say we, it's not just the Crisis Center, all of, all of our programs go. Like tomorrow night, you'll see at the, well, at the Rockville, at the council office, Marpr Rockville City meeting, all of my programs and behavioral health programs will have tables where we have our information, you know, even the risk, you know, harm reduction. If there's an overdose, Narcan, trauma services for intimate partner violence, our child and adolescent programs, we have a whole table and we go all over the community. We went to the Pride Parade in Silver Spring. We went to the Cultural Day, I think it was Latino American Cultural Day. We go to anything that we're invited to. If we don't have staff, Beth- If we don't have staff, Beth and I even go and and we want to, that's what we do. We were there. We talked to people. We give out, you know, cute little things that have our numbers on it. We engage with the community so that they know who we are before they need us. Because we want to be the face and we don't want people to have to call nine one one. We want them to know to call, you know, nine eight eight or call the crisis center. Or, oh, I don't have to call the crisis center. There's actually access. If I'm not in a crisis, they can help me find a provider without having to go to the crisis center. So we do a lot of of those types of activities.
Yeah. For me, when I first heard of the nine eight eight number, I was a little bit skeptical, right? Like you see it first on Facebook and it's like, I'm not going to tell someone who's having a crisis that they should call nine eight eight until I hear it from reputable source. So it's really important that that we make sure that the city of Tacoma Parks residents understand, you know, who you are and that you're dependable. A follow up question? I don't know if either of you know anything about, you know, the the money when it comes to how your collaboration with like the city of Rockville is. If the county is helping to pay for that, or if that is fully funded by the city of Rockville. I know that right now we're paying for this with ARPA and that it's sort of says in here that in the future we'll discuss where we're going to go with how it's going to continue to be funded. And so I was just wondering if you know what the experience with other municipalities has been.
Sure, sure. So actually, all the other positions are totally funded by, so even the Montgomery County Police Department, that position comes out of their budget. And Rockville City, that money comes out of their budget and they reimburse the county. And yeah.
Right, thank you.
Sure.
Great. Well, that means that we may need to 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 make sure that we can talk to our county council members to make sure that there's a plan in place for sustainability of this pilot, once we are no longer in the pilot phase, to ensure that we're able to continue to fund this incredible work. So thank you so much. This has been extremely, extremely helpful. I do want to remind my colleagues that we will be voting on next Wednesday to authorize the city manager to execute the memorandum of understanding with Montgomery County Department of Health and Human Services for the mental health crisis counselors. And so I am so excited about this opportunity. It's something that is greatly needed in our community. And definitely look forward to to working with you all, learning more about the great work that you're doing and the possibility of additional resources down county. I think it's just really critical for us. But I think this is an important first step. So I do want to thank Dorene, you and Beth, as well as as Andrew and all and the chief and all of the folks in our city staff that have been working on this to to make this happen. I know it's been a multi-year process to get this, to get us to this point. So thank you all so much.
Thank you. And and Andrew and and chief. Oh, my God. I I want to say Tony and the police chief know how to reach us at any time. If you guys have questions or if you have concerns about your community or your citizens, please let us know and we're here to to help and to serve.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dorene. And counselors, if you have any questions within between now and next meeting, please let us know. We can get back to you.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Okay. All right. So we are about eight minutes. Thank you very much. We are a few minutes ahead of time, whopping eight minutes. Counselor, I'm assuming so you're excited about our eight minute savings? All right. So I do want to just run quickly through our agenda schedule and any changes to the agenda. So just as a reminder for folks, we had a closed session this morning to, I'm sorry, this morning at five PM. It feels like morning, to discuss the NDC and Tacoma Junction. We just finished our presentation on mental health, mental health crisis counselors pilot program and memorandum of agreement with Montgomery County Department of Health and Human Services. Today, we will have a public hearing on the proposed FY 2024 budget. Additionally, we will have public comments on voting items, general public comments, as well as council comments, city manager comments. And the voting session for tonight is single reading ordinance authorizing the procurement of five police vehicles, followed by a budget work session, where we continue our conversation on operations budget and the capital budget, housing and community development, police department, library and public works. Also just want to let folks know about upcoming meetings. On Monday, the twenty fourth, we will have a budget work session at seven thirty and that will cover the ARPA budget. On Wednesday, April the twenty sixth, starting at seven thirty, we will have, for the record, poetry month reading by our poet laureate, recognition of Montgomery College Scholarship recipients. We will have a voting session on the council authorization for the city manager to execute a memorandum of agreement with the Montgomery County Department of Health and Human Services for mental health crisis counselors. And then we will have a budget work sessions, working on budget reconciliation. On Monday, May the first, we will have another city council budget work session starting at seven thirty. We will have a public hearing FY 2024 tax rate, and that's the constant yield rate, tax rate public hearing, as well as a public hearing on the FY 2024 budget, as well as budget reconciliation. And I believe that takes us until Wednesday, May the third, will be additional budget reconciliation. And then May the tenth, we will start the voting session on the first reading ordinance adopting the FY 2024 tax rate, the first reading ordinance adopting the FY 2024 stormwater management budget, as well as the first reading ordinance adopting the FY 2024 budget. And then we will have a work session on the Maple Avenue Connectivity Project Contract Award Recommendation and Draft Ordinance. Okay. So with that, we're going to move into our public hearing on the proposed FY 2024 budget. So I want to just pause briefly. Wonderful. Okay, so we have the list of individuals that have signed up for the public hearing for today. First, we have Jacqueline Moore. Okay, perfect. Paul Hubner.
Can you hear me? You okay?
Yes, you can.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor, council members, city manager Eubanks. I come before you and the residents tonight to implore you to break the pattern of maintenance of effort budgets. This is a disingenuous persuasion begun during the last administration, which has totally failed the residents year over year over year. It has resulted in annual increases in property taxes far in excess of the constant yield rate for eight of the last nine years, in excess of the rates of inflation and the federal cost of living increases accorded to social security recipients. If the current budget proposal is adopted, it will require an additional 1.54 million dollars of new revenue. In keeping with the maintenance of effort model, the source of that revenue will once again be higher property taxes and depletion of unassigned reserve or diversion of ARPA funds for general fund expenses. I inquire again, where are the other models for the budget that were requested by this council from the dais? Where are the budgets developed around the constant yield rate? Where is the budget modeled on the current rate? And once again, when will residents be afforded the promised interactive online budget tool for resident demands and suggestions? Another missed opportunity. Let's not let this happen again. We need a budget that aligns with projected revenue. We have certainly learned much about the current broken process. Don't repeat it again. Start the budget process in late summer for next year. Don't allow another budget year with only five weeks to approve forty four million dollars of expenditures. Survey the residents for their needs and priorities. Begin a meaningful dialogue with those who pay the taxes. This is the only time you will have any real authority and can impact city services. Start with the ends in mind and all our best to those of you who have chosen to serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Huber. Mary Jane Machui. You're up next. No worries.
Hi, I'm Mary Jane Machui, Ward two. I got this tax lien notice two days ago in the mail and I wasn't very happy. I I, after many calls through the county, I found out that my check I'd written since I used to have SunTrust Bank that turned into Truist and somehow or another it got mixed up when I wrote a check when that exchange was coming, that my check did not bounce. I had nothing from them telling me, nothing, until this nasty notice giving me to the end of this month are my tax. I'll read it to you. It says, "To avoid the county advertising your property for the tax lien sale, the full amount must be paid by April the thirtieth of this year." And I think it's April, is it the eighteenth now? I mean, come on. Suppose I didn't have the money. Luckily, I have enough money to pay for this, but it's ridiculous. But why are they so crazy to jump in and trying to get their money and put my property on on a sale? I mean, I'm concerned that other people who, I mean, I'm starting to lose my memory a little bit as I get older. Suppose I know other people in my neighborhood who have dementia or semi dementia. Is the county taking their property over too? What is happening? This property they're taking over? I'm just wondering what's happening to it. Why can't it be used to help people like my son or I I mean, and other parents especially needs adults? Why if that, they're taking property from people. I don't like that because you're taking advantage of them. But but at least if you're taking the property, give it to people who need it the most, parents of special needs adults, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Machui. Karen Elrich.
No worries. No problem. No problem, no problem. We will still have public comments. So if you if you didn't sign up for the public hearing. All right. So next up is Jeffrey Noel Rosenbaum.
Hi, I'm Jeffrey Noel Nossbaum, Ward six. Just so I haven't had a chance to completely go over the budget yet. But when I got the news, city newsletter in the mail and I saw the tax rate, I was, I already knew that we were looking at a proposed ten cent increase for the county and then seeing an additional three cent possibly for the city. I was like, I'm really going to have to look at this closely. So I started looking through the budget, thinking, oh, I can get a sense and maybe talk. And then I started seeing so many things that I was like, okay, I'm going to have to look in closer at this. I'm going to have to look in. So I'm not ready to make any in-depth comments, but you will be getting comments from me. And I just want to say to be, keep in mind that we are looking at this possible ten cent increase from the county at the same time we'd be looking at this increase from the city. And then then in addition to the other increases we look at in terms of our living. So if if you need to, and this means when you're looking at one-time revenues like ARPA, to be sure and not be, you know, doing things that are going to increase the budget in the future if we're already increasing just to continue our current stuff. So I mean, I support a lot of the ARPA stuff that we're doing, but we need to make sure that we're not keeping us forcing ourselves into tax increases in the future that that we can't afford.
Great, thank you.
Okay, that concludes the the individuals that signed up in person for the public hearing on the tax rate. If there's anyone in the room who has not had an opportunity to sign up to speak regarding the public hearing on the proposed FY 2024 budget, please feel free to come down.
Hi, good evening. My name is Marguerite Seer. I'm a resident of Ward two. Thank you for listening to my comments. I was not aware I had to sign up. I'm here because I'm concerned at the city financial situation where it has become the norm for expenditures to exceed income. I hope that this year's budget puts an end to that. I'm counting on the new leadership recently infused into the council membership to accomplish that. I ask that you consider the following. I would like to see the city learn to live within its budget. Erasmus, the Dutch philosopher, said, frugality is a handsome income. I would like to see the city daylight its budget process, produce one that is interesting to, that is interesting, that is easy to understand, interesting as well, for average residents like myself. Hold open meetings throughout the process so that there's resident participation before it is presented as a fait accompli at the town meetings. Plus, allow itself more time to produce a thoroughly studied one. I would like to see the city analyze its budget expenses regarding its procurement of new police vehicles and expensive equipment. The current practice of providing each officer with a car versus a travel bonus needs to be explored thoroughly to see which one is more feasible and therefore fits better into our budget. Ask yourself, could this money be put to better use somewhere else? I would like to see excessively high management salaries brought into line. It's upsetting to learn that certain individuals in the city make more than our Montgomery County Executive Director. This can be initiated through attrition and the first opportunity to do so is while hiring a new city manager in the next few months. And lastly, and with due respect, I would like the city to understand that my house is not a cash register that opens to produce higher city taxes every time the city just goes over budget. Please do not ask me to tighten my belt until the city does the same. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a slide that should be coming up shortly. Robert Anderson, Woodland Avenue, welcome. Good evening, mayor and council. Tonight, I prepared a slideshow on the wreck bus replacements, part of the budget. This afternoon, the city posted information on all vehicles, including these buzz buses. I'd like to express thanks to the mayor, council, Mr. Eubanks and city staff for this transparency. I think it's wonderful. Hardworking staff has done it right and I appreciate that. First bus. First bus has twenty seven thousand nine hundred eighty-four miles. Purchased in 2017, the only reason given for replacement is age over ten years. The lift was not mentioned on the sheet. Some of the pictures of the interior. Sir, this isn't working. Next slide. Thanks, Jesse. Slides look pretty good. Next slide. Second bus has eighteen thousand five hundred eleven miles purchased in 2010. The only reason given for replacement is age over ten years. Next slide. Driver's seat, most used seat in the bus. It looks wonderful. Next. 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 Wreck bus purchase. Some of these questions have been answered. The mileage, maintenance costs are fair. How many trips per year? Next. Make decisions council should know about specific things. None of these systems were mentioned in any of the information. None of these systems were mentioned in any of the information, so it's in good shape, apparently. If your car were in this condition, would you spend your family's money to replace it? Next. Council typically does not receive actual numbers. They receive perspective, honest opinion from staff. This is changing, and I appreciate greatly. You guys don't understand how much I appreciate over the years that this is happening now. Next slide. General for all vehicle purchases. Some questions remain, particularly about vehicle rental versus vehicle purchase and whether contracting for surfaces could be more effective. Is the formula that they use appropriate for our needs? That's a question. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments for the public hearing on the proposed FY 2024 budget?
Tom Gagliardo from Ward One. First of all, let me begin by thanking City Clerk Carpenter for always promptly responding and acknowledging receipt of the emails that I send. Let me also thank Christine Heidebrecht, Mr. Eubanks' executive assistant, who took it upon herself or at the direction of the city manager to talk to me about my concerns. That's the kind of city manager that I appreciate, sir. I hope you stay. Let me point out, let me point out, Councilmember DeValle, at the end of the meeting on Monday, you mentioned the need to look for other sources of revenue. First of all, I was on a committee many years ago tasked with finding other revenue sources for the city, but let me remind the all of you that every year you get a new source of revenue. It's called increased assessments. The aggregate assessment this year is up 4.1%. Mine is up 11%. It's the same house as last year. I didn't put a second floor on or a porch or any of that. My city tax will go up based on the proposed rate and the assessment 17%. That's before I get hit by the county increase. Now, I'm not an anti-taxer. I believe in paying for worthwhile programs, and the question that I present to the council, as have all my neighbors, is are we getting value for the money we spend? Thank you.
Thank you. Hello?
Hi, good evening. I thought I was signing up for in-person. Evidently, I signed up for Zoom, but here I am. Ferd Hefner, Ward Three, 40-year resident elder at Tacoma Park Presbyterian Church and a member of its Social Witness and Action Committee. There's so much to talk about the budget, but I'm going to narrowly focus on the ARPA budget. As some of you will recall, we were heavily involved, as were other faith communities, in expressing our views in support of direct cash assistance, food security grants, rental assistance, and other portions of the ARPA budget. Since that time, we have also been very active in recruiting volunteers to work at the in-person application events for direct cash assistance. As some of you who have studied the dashboard will know, the enrollment numbers spike after each event. We are eager to continue providing volunteers and have fully expected that there would be some in February, March, and April, and are concerned that those have yet to happen. We are also concerned about the relatively low participation rates in Ward Five and Six relative to eligible households there, which suggests to us that in addition to more events in Ward Four, we need to have ones targeted to Five and Six, including those residents of small apartment buildings. We are pleased that nearly two-thirds of eligible households have enrolled in the program, but we are very aware that the last third will take additional effort in outreach. We were therefore quite frankly shocked to see the ARPA budget table on page 263. The table suggests that after spending a mere $120,000 in FY 24, the program will end and the money will be moved to other purposes, including what appears to be normal capital improvement items that, in our view, have no place in a pandemic relief and recovery account. We therefore urge the council to change the ARPA budget table to show the full remaining balance of direct cash assistance to be expended in FY 24. There is no reason we cannot achieve the full intent of the program as originally envisioned by the council. And should, despite redoubled efforts at outreach, we ultimately reach a point where there is a balance remaining, there are a variety of options the council could at that point consider to complete the program. We thank ARPA Director Bolduc for laying out those options, and on first blush, based on our experience volunteering and hearing the stories of people and families, the option that appeals to us the most is to disperse any remaining funds between previously funded households that are under a specific income limit, perhaps $25,000 or $30,000. One thing that has become very clear to those of us who were volunteered is that remark, is the remarkably low income that many of our neighbors are living on, many while raising families. Therefore, we also do not concur with zeroing out community connectors that is shown in the ARPA budget table. We urge the council to do whatever is necessary to get that program moving. We also have some recommendations on food and security grants, but I'll save those for another time. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Do we have any other public hearing comments on the proposed FY 2024 budget? Come on down.
I have some slides, and I haven't done this slides before, so.
Ms. Cortez, all you need to do is just say next slide, because it's not on, but just let them know when you want to change the slides.
Good evening. Colleen Cortez, Ward One. Many thanks to the mayor, council, and city staff for the grueling hours of work both behind and ahead of you on the budget. I want to probably many residents who share, Councilmember Smalls, expressed gratitude to Mr. Eubanks for his strong, effective leadership of staff at such a challenging time. In general, Mr. Eubanks, you've shared complex information in a kind of straightforward, easy-to-understand way that is really helpful. Tonight, I'm here to plead, however, for greater transparency on one budget issue that seems especially hard for staff and council to openly talk about with residents, tax increases. See on the slide here, a quote from the city newsletter. "Since 2019, city taxes have held constant at .5397." That's not really the case, as the chart here shows. While the tax rate may have been steady, actual tax revenues have gone up, and that means that taxes paid by residents have gone up. The red bars there are the tax rates. The blue bars show how tax revenues, which means taxes billed and paid, have risen. I was inspired by Councilmember Gibson's idea of a handbook for the council. It seems we need a budget handbook for the council and for residents that could transparently lay out some basic information about planning a balanced budget to prepare everyone to be informed participants in difficult choices this year and in the future. The rest of the slides here are my attempt to imagine the kind of simple, basic resources such a handbook could include. There's just time to quickly flip through them here, but I ask the complete set to be part of my comment. The slides will also be part of video for tonight's meeting, so anyone interested can stop the video and read them more slowly. Slide two, please. So there's the formula. Slide three. What is a constant yield rate? Slide four. Why does constant yield rate matter? Slide five. Okay, so here's an example of the kind of clear statement residents need to hear, that the estimated average increase proposed by the city manager would be just over 10%. Slide six, please. Okay, an example of how tax increase is different from a rate increase. Slide seven. Two important ways that property taxes affect renters. Slide eight. This kind of property tax worksheet for residents, businesses, the mayor, council, and staff could be really useful to predict the impact of different rates. Thank you. I urge you to be more transparent about tough subjects like tax increases, and please consider appointing a budget advisory task force for which, which could create the kind of handbook I'm suggesting here and provide other needed support as well for council staff and for our whole community. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next commenter.
Thank you for the opportunity to comment. My name is John Rogers. I have lived at 7425 Baltimore Avenue in Tacoma Park for 29 years, and I live in Ward One. It looks like our city property taxes are going to go up approximately 10%, if not more, this year. The city's property tax increase will be on top of the property tax increases that the state of Maryland and that Montgomery County will impose. Additionally, the city has basically been deficit spending for the last five years or so. The fiscal situation of the city is, in my view, dire and not presently sustainable. Further, and like many in Tacoma Park, my spouse and I are on fixed incomes. It is impossible for me to believe that we can pay off our mortgage, but will still need to pay property taxes of $1,000 a month or $12,000 a year just to stay in our homes. Further, the burden of property taxes are not just borne by property owners, it is actually passed on to renters. Interestingly enough, the city's rent stabilization provisions specifically contemplate this. Thus, the burden of property taxes is borne by all city residents. At this point, it appears that the city plans to rectify its fiscal dilemma simply by raising property taxes rather than also cutting certain easily deferred capital expenses. For example, the city will spend approximately 1.4 million on vehicles over the next three years. More street sweepers are coming at a cost of $250,000 apiece or more, and the city will also spend another $1 million or so to renovate the city hall, even though the city still owes millions of dollars on bond and bond principal to pay for that most recent renovation of city hall. And, of course, we've got the $12,000 walk-behind mower that I found in the budget. In my view, these capital expenses can be deferred, and if deferred, they will go a long way in helping the city return to fiscal sustainability. Of course, I haven't mentioned the 50% increase in the total general government expenses from $3 million to $4.5 million from 2020 to 2024. Therefore, the mayor and council must implement a general hiring freeze and only approve new hires in an open meeting, not fill the current vacant, currently vacant, police captain position, defer spending on new vehicles, eliminate or defer the additional $1 million expense for the town hall renovation, and start the budget deliberation process earlier so city residents have a greater opportunity to participate in the process. Fundamentally, fundamentally, the mayor and council have a duty to manage the city's fiscal affairs responsibly. Addressing the current fiscal crisis simply by raising everyone's property taxes without also making the decision to implement a hiring freeze and make modest and responsible capital expense deferrals is wholly inappropriate. Tacoma Park's residents deserve better. They are watching, and they will in the future remember, and they will be reminded of the positions taken by the mayor and council in adopting this budget. Thank you for the opportunity to comment. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments on the public hearing for proposed FY 2024 budget? Hello?
Hello. Thank you for having me up here to speak about this matter. I've been a resident of Tacoma Park for about 12 years. I live on.
Can you identify yourself?
What? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Natalie Hopkins. I was getting to that. Resident of Piney Branch and Tacoma Park for about 12 years. And I've never really paid much attention, to be honest, to any of the goings-on of the Tacoma Park government until about a year or two ago. And as I've been reading about it and gaining more information, I really am struck by the fact that there has been a lot of mission creep in the scope of the government. It's increased a lot, and as many people have pointed out, there is spending in excess of the budget for the last four or five years, and now there's going to be a tax increase. And all of that has galvanized me to become more active, and I, I'm really concerned about this. It is a pattern, you know, as a, as a person, you can't spend beyond your means, and as a government, we shouldn't be doing that either. And I think the time is to consider turning some functions back over to Montgomery County because whatever reasons there were in the beginning to having these functions here, we need to reexamine them, I think, and also examine the budget in all the ways that the other speakers before me have spoken about. I just think it's not sustainable, and I know some of my neighbors, I've been talking with them, they feel the same way. This is not, it's a time, really, that we need to focus on making the government function within its budget. That's it.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments for the public hearing on the proposed FY 2024 budget?
I'll make this very brief, and I'll send some more detailed comments in writing. My name is Jean Capps. I live at 6737 Eastern Avenue. I'm in Ward Three, and there's just a few things that, I went to read the budget today, 300 pages. It still didn't answer a lot of things I wanted to know. I participated with a large group of citizens on Sunday trying to tear, you know, tear down and understand it, and there were people from the council who were there who said they didn't understand. So first of all, and this is to the whole council, that's the mayor and to my representative, don't sign anything you don't understand. So don't agree to a budget you don't understand. If you don't understand it, find out. I think that the different departments owe it to you to answer your questions. I'm part of Tax Justice for Tacoma Park, which worked very hard with the county council last year to get the duplication funds back. I would like an answer, I know you probably can't pull that out of your hat today, I'd like to know what happened with that. There was a negotiation, some of it was, the confusing thing is that the COVID funds and then the stuff they owed us all the way back to 2012 that we hadn't gotten. There's assumptions in there about funds coming extra governmental, which I assume is mostly the council, the county council. So I think the citizens need to know of what was promised, what did you get, how much of it was a one-off coming from the COVID funds, how much was restitution for slow-paying things that they didn't pay before? How much do we, how, what portion of the police budget are we expecting that the county should be giving us? The city was supposed to negotiate a formula with, with the county. Now, from what I'm hearing, just because of the knowledge base of the people on, on Sunday was that, oh, well, this is, this is gonna, the COVID funds are gonna help a little bit, so they won't have so many meetings. I want to know, are these meetings happening with the county? Has the formula been worked out? If it isn't, what's, I often say, if you don't have a plan, have a plan to have a plan. And so I'd like to know what, whether the fruits of our labor were ever realized. Thank you.
Do we have any other public comments for the public hearing on the proposed FY 2024 budget?
Arthur David Olson, Herbie Hancock Avenue. The current fiscal year's approved budget showed $160,000 this budget year, $300,000 next budget year, and no spending thereafter on City Sidewalk Work for Americans with Disabilities Act compliance. The proposed budget shows on page 244 a new $300,000 of spending in fiscal year 2025. I hope the council will request and share specifics of the work to be done so we can be confident that there are no more six-figure surprises down the road. The actuary's report received by the council in November showed the city's pension contribution increasing from about $1,331,000 this budget year to about $1,483,000 next budget year, an increase of 11.4%. Last week, the city manager spoke of an assumed 15% rate in insurance, increase in insurance costs. Page 84 shows the police fringe benefits going up 22.6%, 22.56%, faster than pension or insurance costs. I hope the council will find out why and share the information. I also hope the council will ask for and share a breakout of pension expenses from fringe benefits to allow for a check of full funding of pensions. The proposed budget shows on page 33 a drop in the equipment replacement reserve addition from $600,000 this year to $550,000 next year. As the city manager said last Monday, the city's financial forecaster sees $1.1 million a year as the appropriate annual addition. I hope the council will increase the addition to at least $610,000 so that it is headed in the right direction. While page 34 shows that real property taxes are to increase 10.68%, page 42 shows the tax rebate program increasing by only 3.7%. This means recipients are losing ground. I hope the council will increase the tax rebate budget to $150,000, about 11% above the current level. Year-round street closures mean loss of parking meter revenue. Given the hours of meter operation and the 75 cent per hour rate, each space is worth about $2,500 a year. With at least nine meters involved, at least $22,500 is involved. I hope the council will treat the closures as an in-kind payment and will reduce budget support for the Old Tacoma Business Association accordingly. And last and least, when I multiply the proposed property tax rate by And last and least, when I multiply the proposed property tax rate by the city's net assessable base, I get a figure $616 higher than the figure in the proposed budget on page 34. I hope this is a bit of extra revenue for the city. If not, I hope the council can ask for and share an explanation of the discrepancy. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments for the public hearing on the proposed FY 2024 budget? Okay. Thank you all so much for your comments. We are going to move to public comments on voting items, and tonight we just have one voting item.
Mayor Cersei, I see that there was one person signed up online.
Okay.
Comment at the public hearing. Are they?
But I think there was someone who signed up via Zoom by mistake but came in person.
We're looking for Melissa Thule.
Oh, no, that's a different person.
Let's see if she's on Zoom.
Okay.
No.
Okay. All right. Well, if she, if Melissa joins us later, we can have them come in. All right. So the voting session for tonight is the single reading ordinance authorizing procurement of five police vehicles. Do we have any public comments on voting items?
Don't do it. Table the motion for all the reasons that you just heard.
Okay. Do we have any other public comments?
When we looked at the budget, can you maybe answer a question? Procuring these vehicles are from the FY 23 budget, not from what you're, so you never spent the money that was allocated last time. So this should be taken into consideration because it's a whole year before you're putting in for next year. And that was one of the big topics that came up, is why do they need to be replaced? How often do they need to be replaced? And I think, just from what I heard, and I'll put it rumors and, you know, understanding from people who know more than I do, is the usage of it. It's a job perk for them to be able to, and I know you don't have time to go into a great explanation right now, but when they're purchased, how they're purchased, when are they sold, after how many miles? If they're racking up 100,000 miles in two years in Tacoma Park, I really have to ask about that. So I don't know, but this is the kind of detail that I think that we are looking for because this is always a large part of the budget, and the question is why.
Do we have any other comments on voting items?
Yes, with John Rogers, 7425 Baltimore Avenue, Tacoma Park, Maryland 20912. It seems that the expenditure of capital on these cars is a continuation of the issue of the city's continued excess capitalization expenditure. I would urge the council to defer voting on this matter until the exact aggregate capital needs of the city are met and can be addressed as part of the overall solution to the city's fiscal financial crisis. So therefore, do not, in my view, acquire the vehicles. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Colleen Cordis, Ward One. I also think it would be a good idea to defer it given that there isn't, you know, we're very close to the next budget being decided. But if you decide not to defer it, a compromise would be to just approve funding for four of the five, and that would be a significant savings. And I think that I am also concerned about the diversion of ARPA money from the most vulnerable residents, the direct cash assistance and the community connectors. And then looking at the budget, I'm not an expert, but I saw, it seemed like a lot of the rest of the protection of the unassigned reserve was coming from downspending the equipment replacement reserve and downspending the facility maintenance reserve. So it did not, I didn't see a lot of, it's not obvious there was actual belt tightening going on. This would be an example, a great way, if you decide to vote tonight, fund four of the five as a first step towards really asking the police department as well as the rest of the departments to identify some belt tightening because that is really what's going to be called for in the years ahead. Thank you so much.
Do we have any other comments?
Good evening. I'm Jessica Landman from Ward One. I think I want to put this in as simple terms as I can. I don't feel that our city can afford to buy these cars right now. We are in a budget emergency, just as we were in an emergency during COVID, and we had to make a lot of adjustments to the way the city was doing business. And the city turned on a dime at that point and made a lot of very difficult decisions at a time that it faced a crisis. And somehow or other, it doesn't appear that the request from the police chief recognizes that we are in a budget crisis. Ideally, in an ideal world, one would be able to replace all the vehicles that one saw that had reached an algorithm that said that they had driven enough miles, et cetera, et cetera. But this is not an ideal world. It's a time when we are literally proposing to take the money out of the emergency ARPA funds that were given to us by the federal government to deal with the very severe challenges of our community, of the people who are the neediest. And the idea that that funding would be going into something like sidewalks and street repairs, it's just wrong at this point. So I guess I'm saying to you, at a time when my family can't afford something, we defer it, and we only take the steps that are absolutely necessary to fill the gap, and that is really the attitude that I'm asking you to bring to the decision-making about these police vehicle purchases. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments on voting items for tonight? Going once, going twice? All right. We're gonna move on to general public comments. Do we have any general public comments?
Hi again, Fred Hefner, Ward Three, and a member of Presbyterians for Police Transformation. We had a very active interest in the ARPA-funded mental health pilot project from the get-go, and as some of you will recall, we encouraged the council to adopt the alternative to policing language in the ARPA ordinance and applauded its passage. Early on in the implementation phase, we met multiple times with the former mayor and former deputy city administrator about the project's progress. We became concerned when earlier this year, two county council committees had a public safety briefing, and it was mentioned by the DHHS representative that the Tacoma Park pilot would embed two counselors within the Tacoma Park Police as part of a crisis intervention team. We responded to that surprise announcement by asking a series of questions that Mayor Cersei thoughtfully and thoroughly responded to. Her responses left us reassured that the original intent of the pilot would be fulfilled. Therefore, it is with deep regret I come tonight to say that our position is to urge the council to direct staff to reopen the MOA process. We saw the MOA, of course, for the first time on Monday. I wish we had seen it earlier. In our view, it is flawed and runs counter to the recommendations of the Reimagining Task Force, counter to the council's ordinance, and counter to what the mayor wrote to us in a recent Q and A exchange. Making this recommendation now is particularly painful because of the near-year-long process it took to get to this stage. However, approval of a MOA in its current form would distort the intent of the pilot program, and approving in its current form would be worse than the further delay that might be required to get it right. I will mention just a few of the shortcomings. The entirety of the introduction, paragraphs 1.1 and 1.2, are in their entirety about the police department. That's the introduction. The first and third paragraphs of the whereas clause is about forming a CIT within the police department, making that appear to be the intent of the pilot project in direct contradiction to the clear language of the ordinance. The first and second paragraphs of the therefore clause, paragraphs 2.1 and 2.2, use the term community CIT, a term which is undefined despite the fact that the MOA contains a detailed definition section, a surprising and inexplicable oversight, leaving the document deficient at a fundamental point. There are no references to mobile crisis outreach teams in the document, only to CITs. If at the end of this pilot program, our goal as a city is to have the county, have a county-funded mobile crisis outreach team in place for Tacoma Park, as I believe it is and should be, then this oversight is not a small one but a major defect that needs to be addressed. So to sum up, we strongly urge the council to direct staff to negotiate changes and to do so in a timely way so that we don't have other huge time delays like we've experienced over the last half a year. And I would also just urge that there be more sharing of key documents as early as possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any other general comments?
I don't think you're gonna necessarily like what I have to say, but I want to preface it with my respect for the elected officials and the staff of the city. And just so you know, I don't enjoy being touched, so please don't walk up and touch me on the shoulder or anywhere else without my permission. My name is Jacqueline Moore, and I live in Ward Two. Please add my public comments to the city's records. I wanted to take a moment this evening to talk about the difference between being a bystander and an upstander. Being an upstander is a simple concept that's taught to all Montgomery County Public School students by guidance counselors beginning in kindergarten. It's also taught by organizations that work with youth such as Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, et cetera. Although it's a simple concept, it takes backbone, bravery, and resilience to put into action. Here are two definitions for you. Upstander: a person who speaks or acts in support of an individual or cause, particularly someone who intervenes on behalf of a person being attacked or bullied. Bystander: a person who's present at an event or incident but does not take part. The Monday, April 17 council meeting would have been a perfect time for council members and mayor to have summoned their collective courage and acted as upstanders. Why is it that a council member can be harangued for speaking after being recognized? Are some voices on the dais less important than others? Have there been recent additions to Robert's Rules of Order that I missed? The April 17 meeting is not the only example of conduct on becoming a council member. I hope that language will be added to the city code that will clearly outline expectations for our elected officials and the consequences that should be in place when those expectations are not met. And Ms. Carpenter, here's a paper copy.
Do we have any other general public comments?
My name is Megan Scribner, and I live in Ward One. Given the state affairs with the city budget, it feels crazy to talk about anything else, but I'm also very concerned about the proposed Womata and EYA development, the metro, and time is of the essence. There are many problematic issues such as eliminating 150 public parking spaces there. There will be no hourly, daily, or handicap spaces for metro users, even though the lot is nearly used at full capacity and metro ridership is only at 50% of the pre-COVID ridership. The development is also out of proportion with the building surrounding the metro. Instead of being between four and five stories highs, this development will be seven to eight stories high and 5.6 times the square footage of the Tacoma Business Center, the largest building in the area. It's going to be massive. Whether you agree with my concerns or not, this shouldn't be a take it or leave it plan. EYA and Womata should be open to changes based on careful scrutiny of the development. It is very important that the city submit comments to the Womata draft report. The deadline is this Friday, and that you ask to be a party to participate at the D.C. zoning commission hearing on June 15. The city should also, as in the past, pass a resolution identifying its specific concerns and push EYA and Womata to respond to them in a concrete way. Fortunately, this resolution can wait until after the budget is resolved. If the city fails to add comments or request to be a party in the zoning hearing, it implies that the city agrees with the transit, with all the transit aspects of the development and does not choose to have a voice in future negotiation and decisions regarding this development. This would be a huge mistake and set a dangerous precedent. I also urge you to reach out to our county, state, and federal representatives to support the city's legitimate voice in these proceedings. The impact of the building built on D.C. land actually affects Maryland more than D.C. residents. And closely examine the development and its impact on transit, the environment, housing, and other issues important to their districts. The officials have been supportive in the past, and I'm sure they would be again if asked. As to the budget, just a quick comment. The city and residents are scrambling to understand and resolve the budget issues with no time to spare. It happens every year, but it doesn't have to be this way. I urge you to push back on the date so that city, staff, and community have the time to make careful assessments. To my knowledge, the residents have never been asked what services they would be willing to forego, and then come up with a budget based on most needed programs, services, and purchases that we can afford. Thank you.
Do we have any other general public comments? All right. I'm about to close it out. Okay. All right. So that ends our public comment period. We are going to turn things over to my colleagues. I would like to ask my colleagues to please, in the interest of the plethora of things that we need to accomplish tonight, to stay within your three minutes. Councilmember Small.
Thank you, Mayor. Begin with, end of Robert's Rules of Order, point of order is a superseding motion that must be examined and dispatched with immediately. They usually have to do with protocol and procedure, and when you presuppose that you've had a conversation about a thing several hundred times, and then also you have some protocols as to which things are supposed to be germane when you're having the conversation, it's entirely reasonable for a working meeting to become concerned about these things. So I appreciate your concerns, but additionally, when we got these positions, the first thing that I told everyone on this council was that they needed to read because these jobs are hard, and I have four years of experience doing it, and these people didn't. And so I'm not necessarily as concerned about trying to cut off people or be efficient with regard to the effective administration of government. Secondly, in a polite company conversation in which people are speaking and someone with a chronic illness has to leave the room in a manner in which a bunch of people are presupposing that that person is inherently discourteous, boogeymanish, or maybe even over black, you tap people on the shoulder. And so I apologize if I invaded your space while you have on a Bad Brains t-shirt, but I didn't mean to. Now, finally, the issues here are, I am really psyched about everything that everybody said during that budget hearing. These are the things that I have been sending emails about and having conversations with people, and I have been getting in trouble with our staff or other members of the council for being discourteous when I'm asking direct questions. And if I try to be colloquial in order to make sure that they know that I'm not trying to be combative, I get in trouble for that, too. So those constraints are constraints that I'm not willing to labor under. So I won't. Additionally, the bus and any number of things are ordinarily done with an amortization schedule from legit. It has a bunch of things in it. In other places, in Prince George's County where people, you know, have institutional neglect on their minds, we probably run a car 200,000 miles. We don't have any sort of scheduled things because you have to make those kinds of decisions on the fly. In the end, with regard to Ward Six and the issues of complexity with regard in this budget, I'd encourage you to look at the list survey I entered very completely with regard to where we are and what this process entails because technically, the beginning of the process is the presentation of the city manager's budget, but it's not the end. And I have not been convinced that we need to be so far away from the council yield rate anyway. And so I appreciate those concerns with regard to the budget constraints here. I really genuinely do. Additionally, some people have said some things that have been discussed, not necessarily ad nauseam, but a lot in here, this year even. And when you come in and make demands about those kinds of things now, it's hard for people to sit there and be demanded of when we come here every week, and we spend all day doing this. And so if you're talking about civility, you have to throw some out.
Thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember DeBala.
Thanks to everybody for coming out today. I'm not gonna go through everybody's individual comments, but some of you are gonna get, I think, are gonna get emails from me about, someone asked about tax duplication, a couple of other factual things, either I or someone else. We'll get back to you on that because there are answers to these things. Just not take the time right this minute. I'm hoping that if he's able to do so, that the police chief, when he comes up here to talk about vehicles, will answer. We'll to talk about vehicles, will answer, will summarize what he said last week and the week before about the process for vehicles. Some of you seem hurted and maybe you'd like to see that amended. Some of you appear not to know that there even is a process. So if that's okay with everybody, I'd like to have you just go through that one more time. So other than that, what I was gonna talk about is, speaking of budgets, so if for Ward Two residents, we're going to be talking about all of this tomorrow night at 7:30 at the Recreation Center on New Hampshire Avenue. So if you want to come out and talk further about any of this, that'd be great. Next Thursday, 7 o'clock, April 27, public safety meeting for Ward Two residents, again at the Rec Center. Two of our biggest issues right now that people want to talk about. And I think, two more things. Not last, but not least, property tax credits. We mentioned it last week, but since there's a lot of people in the room, there's an updated section on the city website about the different state, county, and city property tax credits. Many of you are probably signed up for everything you're eligible for, but you know how that goes, the longer you live here, the older you get, and then suddenly you're eligible for something you didn't, you weren't before. So it's worth checking. And more importantly, because of a new state law, everybody that gets the $692 county credit on their property taxes has to apply. Now, you may have applied in the first place, or you might have just been given it because you live in Montgomery County. So check by May 1st on whether you've applied so that you can continue to get that credit. Now we go for last. There was a Transportation Planning Board meeting today. I won't go into details, but anyone who's interested in bus electrification in the region should probably drop me a note and I'll send you the slides because it was really interesting to hear not just Womata, but all of the agencies talking about how they were going to go forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gibson?
Yes, I can't identify all the many folks, the words of each of you in terms of the issues raised, particularly the budget and with regard to the police vehicles. I just want to say that I deeply appreciate what you've said tonight, which is not new. I've heard it at various meetings that I've held, meetings I've attended, emails that I've gotten, that there is a point where people start paying attention to your budgets. Whether it's, whatever the reason is, you start paying attention, maybe because it hurts. And I do think that it is, we have a trend in terms of how we have increased expenditures on very valuable programs and services. But we've come a point, I think many of us have reached the point, that either we or our neighbors can't pay those increased taxes, not the tax rate as much as the taxes that we actually pay. So I appreciate that you're paying attention. I wasn't paying attention a couple of years ago, but I'm paying attention now. And I also am paying attention to my neighbors that are hurting, particularly those with fixed incomes and low-income homeowners. And then, as has been pointed out, renters are affected as well. I will do what I can, and my colleagues, I think, also would like to do the best they can to try and see if we can get the tax rate down to something that's closer to what we can aspire, aspire to do the best, to be efficient with our expenses. Expense, not our expenses, with your taxes. Thank you very much. And on the budget, and then with the police vehicles, I think it's such a big enough cost that it should also be deferred until after the budget process. Not that I'm against it, there are questions about the policy, but I think that we have bigger fish to fry right now in terms of looking at our capital improvement budget and discuss our police vehicles, those five vehicles after the budget process. Thank you all for coming and for caring about you and your neighbors.
Councilmember Honza.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. It's, once again, it's really nice to be able to hear from so many people from the community. Thank you to everybody for coming out. I just want to share that I, as my colleagues are, I can see everybody up here, including the staff, is just working very, very hard to review this 300-page budget. I personally, as a brand-new council member, have actually found this budget very clear. I regularly deal in budgets for 20 years, that's part of my career. I think it's got both the qualitative elements and many of the quantitative elements that I need to be able to ask the right questions, and that is why we've been elected. So please, I'm not asking you to have all faith in us. We need people to come out and ask us these questions when you want us to dig down, but there is only so much time also for each and every one of us to ask those questions. So each of us is going to choose the ones that we think really are the best questions to ask and to use our staff's limited time to get answers on at this point. So, and with regard to some of the folks and the questions, again, I'm not going to speak to every one of the points, but one of the comments in particular stuck out to me about direct cash assistance and not getting, I'm looking for the elder. He left, okay. But his comment spoke to me because there was a map of where the direct cash assistance has been distributed, and I specifically was, I really appreciated the staff having provided that map to us. I was able to at least see the concentration of resources across the city, and I know that I have the poorest ward, and I could see a really deep red color all across my ward, which made me feel very positive about the results of penetration. I would like to see the more specific tables representing Ward Five and Ward Six and maybe a mapping of how many households fall, excuse me, under the $60,000 threshold, just to see how many houses we could have targeted within the city. And I bet that does exist, and I'm appreciative actually of the gentleman, and I'm sorry, I don't have his name, who came out to speak about that tonight because he wrote a very detailed and thoughtful letter to us about that, and it was really, really useful. And I will be having a budget meeting myself within Ward Five Tuesday, April 25, 7:30 to 9:00. Thank you, Jesse, for helping me to set that up. It's just an informal Ward Five meeting to give people greater opportunity to talk about these outside of this setting. And also, I am very grateful to the county and the city for so many opportunities lately to talk about the minor master plan and ask tough questions. I will be getting comments out to my ward and others as soon as I can. I'm on jury duty all this week in addition to these meetings, so I apologize for the delays. And on a lighter note, there is a whole array of fantastic Earth Day events. I suspect the mayor's going to speak to some of those. But in so much as I am from Ward Five, a plug for 9:00 a.m. in Sligo Creek at the bottom of Kennebec, 10:00 a.m. the tree walk with Marty, 11:00 a.m. celebration outside the co-op, and some rewards for font, and a craft fair at TPMS. And then finally, please join us from 4:00 to 6:00 at Long Branch. It's not the city's celebration, but the Long Branch business community needs us, especially if you're up in Ward Five and you're part of the city and you want to see that portion of our city thriving. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Honza. Councilmember Fulter?
I just want to thank everybody for coming out. The city manager presented a robust budget, and we are working on helping to say places where maybe we can spend a little bit less. And so we all hear you, and I think that's basically what Councilman Small said, was that it's important, it's harder for us to add things in as the council than it is for us to take stuff out because we don't necessarily know how much it costs to do things. And so after he provides how much these things will cost, we'll have to weigh whether or not our community that's used to having so many services is going to be able to afford to have as many services as it's used to having. So, thank you.
All right. Well, I just want to echo my colleagues in great appreciation of the turnout for today in terms of the budget and all of the thoughtful and robust comments that have been provided. We rely on your feedback, it's helpful. This is a 300-plus-page document, so the more eyes, the better. But we also have to plan for not just reducing expenditures, but increasing our financial health in the future. And that includes increasing our resources that are included in our reserves. So it's important for us to make sure that as we're thinking through the budget, as we're making decisions about the budget, that we're not just thinking about the now, but we're thinking about the tomorrow and years to come. So I welcome that feedback and appreciate the feedback that's been coming in. I truly, truly, truly value the engagement that our community has around these important topics. And so definitely keep those comments coming. It's always very, very helpful. Just want to echo as well my appreciation for Fern from the Presbyterian Church. Definitely will take a look at the MOA. I think it may be a terminology thing because mobile crisis was included as part of the definition of crisis services. So definitely will work with city staff just to make sure that there isn't a terminology gap. But definitely appreciate the feedback provided. But I want to stress my support of moving this MOA forward. Time critically is of the essence with so many residents in our community that are in desperate need of intervention now. In terms of stuff that's been happening in the city, Councilmember Honza and I had a wonderful opportunity to participate on Sunday in the Washington Adventist University Fun Fest. It was wonderful. I want to thank the Washington Adventist University President, Dr. Spence, as well as all of his staff that were just so welcoming. And you had a petting zoo, wonderful ice cream, food, it was great. So definitely want to thank Washington Adventist University for that invite. Also want to thank Laura Barclay. The Tacoma Park Farmers Market celebrated its 40th anniversary on Sunday, so I had a chance to go out and ring the bell. And this weekend will be more fun activities. The Silver Spring Intermediate Neighborhood Park Celebration is happening on Saturday. That was delayed from last Saturday because of the rain. I will be at the Tacoma Park Silver Spring Co-op on the 22nd for the Earth Day Celebration, so I'm excited about that. And the Ann Street Farmers Market will start on Wednesday. So I'm super excited about that. That is where I get my Wednesday lunches, and they are the best lunches. So again, want to thank everyone for coming out tonight, and I'm looking forward to seeing you all at a number of events over the course of this weekend. And so with that, I will turn things over to Acting Deputy City Manager, Ubanks.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, members of council, staff, and the public. Good to see so many people here today. Glad to have your presence and hear your comments. I have quite a few staff comments, city managers' comments. Some of it you've already heard, so I will repeat a little bit, but I think I may have a little bit more detail in some cases. The city website has been updated with a variety of new items, including an update on the library and community center redevelopment project. You can find this link on the city's homepage. There are also two other items that may be of interest to the community on the news and news alerts page. So please check out this one item that Councilmember DeBala mentioned, the property tax credits, are you eligible? And the refuse and recycling regulations. Each of these have deadlines coming up, so be sure to check those out relatively soon. Tomorrow on April 20, we celebrate National Poetry Month with a poetry reading. It will include four local poets who will share their original work. It'll take place from 7:30 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. in this auditorium. Also tomorrow at 7:30 and/or Friday, April 21, at 12:30 p.m., we'll have the Rolling Into Spring Bike Safety Roundtables. During each of these one-hour online sessions, participants will have the opportunity to give feedback on some current projects, learn about upcoming initiatives, and share thoughts on the needs of people riding bikes in Tacoma Park. These are via Zoom, and you can find the link on the city's website and in the public notices. My comments will be posted online tomorrow. On April 25, the TKPK 5K Transition Meeting will be held, and this is for interested parties as the city transitions the event to new management. This is also a Zoom event, and the link, again, can be found on the city's website. And then on April 28, we have Shorts Night Film Screening. Short films by five D.C.-area filmmakers who will be screened, and a Q&amp;A with the film directors will follow. This, again, is held in an auditorium, and the time is 7:30 to 9:30 p.m. We have a few updates from the library. We have several big programs coming up with the library and its partners, two notable special programs in English and three that include Spanish. On Tuesday, April 25, we have Favorite Poem Night at the Interim Library, located at 7505 New Hampshire Avenue at 7:30 p.m. All are welcome, whether you plan to participate or observe. On Tuesday, 5/2 at 7:30 p.m., we're participating with the Historic Tacoma Incorporated to present Preserving Your Family's Heritage at the HTI HQ, Historic Tacoma Incorporated HQ at 7328 Carroll Avenue, where you can learn about how to evaluate, handle, and store your family's records and memories. On Saturday, April 29, the library has three programs being held with Dia de, it's in Spanish, forgive me, Dia de los Ninos at 11:00 a.m. at the Rec Center on New Hampshire Avenue. If driving, parking will be at the Interim Library, again at 7505 New Hampshire Avenue. The library will have free artistic performances, stories, music, and information about the community. El Quinto follows at 2:00 p.m. at the library, a volunteer-led Spanish language program. And Yards Drama and Interactive Storytime will be held at 3:00. For more information about these programs, please visit the library's website or email staff@tacoma park M D dot gov. And then finally, from Public Works, an update on the New Hampshire Avenue Recreation Center. The HVAC rooftop units that were underway are expected to start Thursday, April 20. This project, together with the roof replacement and the installation of an air filtration unit for the exercise room and weight rooms, will complete the work identified and funded through ARPA for the recreation center in FY '23. This was mentioned once before, but I'll repeat it. Arbor Day celebrations include a tree walk that'll take place on April 22 at 10:00 a.m. at Circle Woods at 6605 Cockrell Avenue. The city's urban forest manager, Marty Frye, will lead the session, identifying some of our choice native trees and expounding upon their virtues. We will have rain gauges, trunk guards for deer protection to give away on a first-come, first-served basis. Please RSVP on event right so we can keep tabs of the expected attendance, and the RSVP is on the city's website. The open house for the EV sweeper is scheduled for Thursday, April 27 at 10:00 a.m. in front of the community center. Please join city officials, including former city council members and staff to display the equipment and provide information. The event will also kick off the announcement of the Name the Sweeper contest, which is open to all. The contest will take place from 4/27 to May 20. We hope to engage the community in a creative brainstorming for an appropriate name for the sweeper. The winning name will be unveiled on the sweeper in the July 4 parade. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Great. All right, so now we are moving on to our voting session. The single, one, let me just check with the city clerk. We don't have any minutes to adopt for this week, correct? Okay. The voting session is a single-reading ordinance, authorize, or procurement of five police vehicles?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Okay. Are there any questions before we go to vote? Councilmember Small?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, I just wanted to go back over some of the factual premises of this purchase. We're currently behind on police vehicles and haven't received a previous delivery. And is it my understanding that you guys need seven vehicles, but you're only asking for five at this time, or was I wrong about that?
We were scheduled to purchase seven vehicles this year. We're putting forward five right now, we'll be putting forward two later on. We are way behind in the purchase of vehicles due to the pandemic. We are currently operating with vehicles that were scheduled to be deadlined and should be deadlined. We are in desperate need of vehicles. If I could just say one thing.
Can you explain the deadlining process as well? That'd be great.
I have Director Braithwaite, who can speak to the specific vehicles that are being deadlined. She also can speak to the sale of vehicles that we're deadlining. She also can speak to the sale of vehicles that we're deadlining, how we go about... how we go about deadlining vehicles and so on and so forth. We talked about that last week. She'd be more than happy to go over that again. I provided a bunch of information to council members about everything from a hybrid vehicle to a patrol pursuit rated vehicle to our replacement policy and so on and so forth. When I was hired five years ago as a police chief, I was hired to provide public safety services to the city of Tacoma Park. And all intents and purposes, we have a state-of-the-art police department that is one that is envied by others. Part of having a successful police department is having equipment for our staff. Let me say that again. Part of having a successful police department is having equipment for our staff. I would not be coming to this council under these circumstances and asking for these vehicles if I did not think that we absolutely needed these vehicles. Period. And we can... I can answer all the questions that the council members may have. If you want Director Braithwaite to come up right now and again go over the replacement policy and speak specifically to the vehicles that we're replacing, mileage, et cetera.
I think that's important for the people that are here.
Absolutely. Then, Mike, Director Braithwaite, speak to that.
Just some general information. The city does have a administrative policy that's been in place for many years that directs and oversees the way the process is for vehicle purchase and replacement. It not only deals with setting up a fleet review committee that annually, twice a year, looks at vehicles and sees which ones are warranted for replacement. It also spells out how to add vehicles to the fleet, how to dispose of vehicles once they have lasted their useful life, the process that we use for the sale of those vehicles. So all that's spelled out administrative code, or administrative regulations. So we are... anybody can get that policy. I think the chief shared it, and it was attachment to the work session discussion of the fleet, these particular police cars. So it's available for the public to see as well. The specifics of police cars, we have an eight-year, 100,000-mile replacement program for that, which means that once a vehicle reaches that... those thresholds, they're eligible to be considered for replacement. We also set up a maintenance criteria so that when maintenance costs for an individual vehicle exceed $2,000 in any given year, then that again flags them as potential for replacement. Each year when we're evaluating vehicles, we go through the fleet, check out the mileage, check out the maintenance costs, check out the age, and see which one of those meet or don't meet the qualifications. I forwarded to the council the FY23 vehicle replacement process. I don't know that we have that available anywhere online, so we might want to add it to the council agenda or some other way, you know, post it. I think based on what I've been hearing, it may provide some relief to people who are concerned that we're just deadlining a vehicle because it's got a scratch on the door. That's certainly not the case. The city is very lucky to have a really dedicated fleet maintenance staff, and so our vehicle maintenance supervisor takes this work very, very personally and goes over each vehicle with a fine-tooth comb, as do our maintenance staff. So when it reaches the point at which that they believe the vehicle needs to be replaced, that's duly noted, and as the chief has indicated, safety is a big part of that. These police vehicles are take-home vehicles. It is a perk, if you will, for the city, and it's a decision that the council made, I don't know how long ago, decades. It by all means helps with recruitment and retention, and if you evaluate police departments around that area, they certainly have similar programs in place. So if the city were not to have that, in addition to being a smaller police department, it would definitely have an impact on recruitment. So sort of, like it or not, it is a critical component of, as the chief said, maintaining a fully functional police department. I don't know if there was any other specific questions that you had?
No, ma'am. No, Director, that was fantastic. Thank you very much. And the only thing I wanted to say, add, is that generally speaking, for the municipalities, take-home program is a standard practice. It's one of the ways you induce people when you're going to probably end up paying them less.
And Councilmember Small, if I can just add, that's also a contractual agreement with Local 400 as well.
Councilmember Gibson.
Yes, thank... Mayor, I was just wondering, would it be possible for me to motion to defer this question until after the budget? Is that... may I make a motion to that effect?
Yep.
I'm making... I would like to make the motion. I'm learning these procedures here, folks. I'd like to make a motion that we table this discussion or this decision until after we've gone through the budget process. The reason I think it was... is because we're in a slow-moving crisis with regard to our fiscal issues, and we would be better able to evaluate whether we need these five vehicles replaced at this time. We can make that same decision, yes or no, in late May or June when we're finished with the budget process. So that's my motion.
So there's a motion... there's a motion on the floor to table this vote until after the budget. Do I have a second? Okay. There's no...
I just... I wasn't really done with questions to be in a position to answer such a motion.
I just... point of order, point of order. Technically, he's... Randy's motion is germane because it's a tabling motion, so it supersedes in that regard. And I would just say, as a point of order, Randy, I would have probably seconded your motion to do the conversation part, but you already did that part, so that's why I didn't second it, just personally.
Oh, well, again, I'm trying to learn how to... the ropes on this.
That's cool.
Do you want to second it now? Is it possible?
Yeah, to take the vote, I'll do that. I'll second that.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. So are there any questions regarding the motion that's currently on the floor to table?
Yes.
Councilmember DeBala?
Yes.
If I can just say, before we get into this, if we do not purchase this... we have locked in fiscal year '23 pricing on these vehicles. If we do not purchase these vehicles, we are going to have fiscal year '24 pricing.
All right.
Can I ask the council member if he would consider withdrawing his motion until we can finish the dialogue?
Yeah.
That's a request?
I mean...
Is that out of order, Mayor? Okay.
I'm happy to defer it. I wasn't sure the best timing, frankly.
Thank you, council member. It sounds like that would be helpful.
All right. So you're withdrawing your motion?
Until after the discussion.
All right. Okay, so let's get back to the list. Councilmember Hansak.
Thank you. Yes, Chief, I have a few questions. One, I was able to sit with some of the council member... excuse me, some of the members of the community that I see here tonight and some others who are not actually from my ward, but it was helpful to hear what they were thinking about some of the vehicles and the other questions that may not have specifically been asked. Among them was people were curious whether they could replace... if you could tell us, if you remind me maybe, I don't remember if we talked about it, the replacement cost when an officer is recruited and they are allowed to elect not to get the vehicle. Is that correct? They could either take a cash payout, I think, or a vehicle, am I...
There is a...
Is that right?
There is a section of the Local 400 contract that speaks to, in lieu of a patrol car, like if we don't have enough, they could receive a stipend for a take-home patrol car.
Okay.
Let me just... let me just reemphasize what Director Braithwaite said earlier. Almost all of the agencies in our region have take-home cars. We are one of the few agencies in the country and in the region that's almost fully staffed. There are 42 of our 43 officers are staffed. We are staffed because we provide good equipment, we provide a good working environment, and this is... this is part of what we need to do to attract good officers. If we start tinkering with that, we're going to lose officers.
And let me be clear, that is my number-one priority, is for you to maintain the high-quality police force that we have. So I ask these questions because I want to make sure that we've been able to come full circle to respond to our community's concerns, and they can feel assured that they have the most cost-efficient and most fabulous force that we can get for that money. So with due respect, would you mind sharing with us just approximately what that stipend is so people understand the value of that for a good officer? Is that... or is that not something you want to... that's okay.
I don't have it readily available, but I definitely can provide that to the council.
Okay. And then there was another question folks asked at that meeting about whether or not officers are allowed to take those vehicles out of the area. I'm not sure why they wanted to know that, but I'm just curious if you could share that with us.
Contractually, the officers are provided a take-home vehicle within a 25-mile radius of the city of Tacoma.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying. All right. And now, could you share with us a little bit more about what you were just saying? This is really of interest to me. So if we were to table the vote tonight on getting those vehicles, what are the implications for your recruitment, your retention, and the amount that we might then incur if we were to wait until after the budget season? Thank you.
First and foremost, we were very fortunate to get these vehicles. There's been a backlog of vehicles over the last two years because of chip issues and other issues with police cars. We were very fortunate to get these five vehicles because they were... they were of order that a larger agency made, that they were not able to take order of these five vehicles. So we were able to get these vehicles. We were able to get fiscal year '23 pricing on these vehicles. If we are not to purchase these vehicles, most likely we're going to have fiscal year '24 pricing, which is going to go, I would say, in somewhere in the neighborhood of 5%. As far as our fleet in general, because of the issue with getting vehicles, we currently are operating a fleet that has vehicles in our fleet that have been recommended to be deadlined two years ago. We also do not have enough vehicles at times for our officers when their vehicles go down for PM service, whether it be an accident, whether it be for a recall, to have officers have a vehicle that they can utilize. I cannot stress enough, I would not be asking for these vehicles if I did not absolutely think we needed to. We take a comprehensive look at our entire fleet. Part of that was looking at the outlier years. So we need these vehicles now, but when we looked at the ERR, I actually had pushed some vehicles that were scheduled to be purchased two years from now to four years out. So we're looking at how we can balance and how we can maintain our purchases so they're most cost-efficient. When we transitioned to the hybrids, it limited what we could purchase. For all of our patrol vehicles, as I've said multiple times, we need to have a patrol and pursuit-rated vehicle for our patrol staff. And I've given information about what that means. I'd be more than happy to go in detail about what that means. That does not mean that we're out pursuing people in vehicles. Pursuit is what the language is to describe the build of the vehicle, patrol and pursuit-rated. As Councilmember Seaman said last week, we have drastically reduced what our officers can chase vehicles for. So I can't remember the last time we had a vehicle chase. That's not what it is for. I would be more than happy if it would benefit the residents here and/or the council to go in detail about what a pursuit-rated vehicle is. I know a lot of people have questioned, well, why can't we just buy an electric vehicle? Because there is no electric pursuit-rated vehicle, patrol pursuit-rated vehicle currently available. And if we could, we would. But as we do that, we need to be cognizant of the infrastructure that's going to be needed as we transition the entire fleet, not just the police fleet, but the entire fleet towards electric vehicles. So just for the public, and as the council knows, we do have electric vehicles in our fleet. Those electric vehicles are utilized by our non-p patrol staff, and that is the goal. And we've been committed to do our part to having a very energy-efficient fleet. But I cannot stress enough, we need these vehicles.
Councilmember DeBala?
Yes, thank you. You pre-answered some of my questions, I think, because Councilmember Hansak did such a great job of asking them. So I just wanted to repeat something I said last week. The council has heard it, but many other people have not. Part of the concern here is the... I'm looking at the wrong person. Is the vehicle fleet policy, and does it need to be updated as we move towards hybrids and electric vehicles? That's not something we're going to do tonight. But I have that as one of a couple of things that I want to put on the list of things we must do before the next budget round. And I plan to do it, as I said last week, in the form of a resolution that goes with the budget this year so that we are committed and there's an outline of who's going to do what when. Same thing with looking at the transition itself that you just referred to. Do we need chargers? Where do we need them? Do we need more training? All that stuff, right? Just mapping that out. And I talked last week about taking advantage of tax credits that are available. Turns out, they have to be plug-in hybrids. There are no plug-in hybrids for... I hate the word pursuit-rated because you sent me the criteria, and it's not about the pursuit, it's about the safety of the officers.
You could get a Lamborghini, but like, that's the only kind. They have electric...
If it helps, I can give the rundown of what exactly that is, if it helps.
I already heard it, and I'm happy to share it with any residents who want to read the email when we get that far. So that all said, the price that you've got is a very attractive price, even for a '23 price. And I did some double-checking myself today, as you know, but nobody else does yet, and it's going to be more than 5% if this window is missed and this piggyback contract is missed. So for me, we need the vehicles. We said last year that we were prepared to pay for them. They are budgeted for in this fiscal year. So for me, the question's about looking at the next steps. I want to make sure we do that, but I don't want to miss the deal. So I think...
Well said.
That might have been all my questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Fulcher?
I was wondering, do we keep... I saw that you're keeping track of the cost of maintenance for the deadlined vehicles. Do we keep an average cost of maintenance for non-deadlined vehicles? Okay, because it wasn't apparent to me on the sheet, so it's hard for me to say how much more expensive these deadlined vehicles are to maintain compared to the newer vehicles that are getting normal maintenance, when I couldn't compare the numbers. And so are you waiting on vehicles that you had ordered from... like, to replace already? Or...
That is correct. We still, because of the supply chain delays, we have been told that the vehicles have been built, and we're waiting to take possession of them. We have gone two years, and that's why we're in desperate need of these vehicles. Like I said, we're driving vehicles that have 50,000 miles, that have maintenance problems. Patrol and... I can't in good conscience put them in some of these vehicles. They're not... and at some point, they're not going to be safe. So we need these vehicles.
How many are you currently waiting on, not including these?
I believe we're waiting on four vehicles from last fiscal year.
When you say electric vehicles aren't available, do you mean... you don't mean that they're not...
Pursuit-rated.
They're not approved? I mean, I don't know, sorry. I got real deep in this.
That's fine.
And I saw that New York City had some electric vehicles that they're using for their police fleet that were electric vehicles, and it didn't... it sounded like they were pursued from how it was being... okay.
I explained in the email I sent to the full council earlier this afternoon, those vehicles are not patrol pursuit-rated. Those vehicles are used primarily for more administrative roles within NYPD, same as we do.
Right.
They are not...
Just like our parking enforcement.
Yeah, like our parking enforcement, their community services, the people that direct traffic, so on and so forth. That's what those vehicles are used for. There's also been some references to a vehicle that Hyattsville has. That's not a pursuit patrol-rated vehicle. That is more of a show vehicle. Frostburg has the same type of vehicle. What we're talking about is vehicles that our patrol officers are patrolling and the uniformed officers that need the pursuit patrol-rated capacity for their vehicles. We're not talking about our parking enforcement. We're not talking about me as the chief. We're talking about patrol officers that are running the calls for service.
Okay. And I guess we don't really know till we get into it what the deadlining will look like for hybrids. I'm assuming... I don't know. I'm assuming that with hybrids, that the wear on an engine might be different than that on a gas engine, especially I know that going lots of time, low speeds, and idling is not good for a car, but maybe it'll be different with hybrids.
I think it's just to not speak for Director Braithwaite, but absolutely, when we transition to the hybrids as well as the electric vehicles, we're going to have to reevaluate that eight-year over... the eight-year renewal process. And just for the public, that's for patrol vehicles. It's 10 years for our vehicles that are administrative vehicles, so the vehicles that are not utilized in patrol capacity. So obviously, we're going to have to, and I think Councilmember DeBala has already spoke specifically on it, we're going to need to go back and revisit our vehicle replacement... going to need to go back and revisit our vehicle replacement criteria based on the variation of vehicles that are in our fleet. And it's not just the police department. We have the new electric street sweeper that, who knows what it's going to be called? I don't know what my vote is, but so, I think, yeah, that's absolutely something we're going to need to do. And I think it's good practice anyway. We started this policy in 2017, and I just want the public to know, we're one of a few agencies that has a comprehensive policy like this. A lot of agencies just say, okay, well, you know, 80,000 miles, 100,000 miles, we're just going to replace it. And that's not the best practice. The best practice is to figure out what vehicles are, need to be replaced. So just because a vehicle makes that eight-year criteria does not mean we're going to replace it. If it doesn't meet the other criteria, it still may be a viable vehicle. So we have vehicles that have, patrol vehicles that have more than eight years and are good vehicles. We have some vehicles that are less that are not great vehicles, because they've been involved in multiple accidents or so on and so forth, or we've had issues with them that are costing a lot of money as far as repairs, new engine, et cetera.
And then, in order to take advantage of the pricing that you're talking about, when do we have to purchase these?
Now. We have to, we have to purchase them now. We've signed a contract that we were able to lock in the fiscal year '23 pricing. There are no more fiscal year '23 vehicles available. So unless we were able to get them off the lot, like we are, get them off this other contract that we were able to do, we will be buying fiscal year '24 vehicles that are going to be more expensive. When I said 5% earlier, that's what we factor into our increase in costs from year to year. It's probably going to be more than that. So to get the five vehicles that are here that are fiscal year '23 vehicles, we have to do it now.
Okay, thank you.
Just one more, Randy, I'm sorry.
One question.
Just one more.
Councilmember Hanzak has a light on.
I have one follow-up, and then, yeah, just one more follow-up on the hybrids. Now, I did notice that those are, the larger pursuit rated vehicles are a larger vehicle, and I believe there's just one type that's currently available. I know you're not a technology expert, nor would I expect you to be, but do you have, have you heard through the grapevine, through other police departments, or what's currently coming down the pipeline? Is there another pursuit rated vehicle that looks like it's eminently going to be created, such that there would be any competition in the coming year or two, just given the price tag, and that we do want to move our whole fleet that direction? Thanks.
That's a really good question. Just so you know, these were, in fiscal year '19, if you look back at the memo I sent you, was when the Ford hybrid was developed. Ford has kind of cornered the market on police vehicles, unfortunately. We used to have competitive pricing between Dodge and Ford and Chevy. Unfortunately, Ford has kind of cornered the market, so we're kind of locked in there. But just to clarify, the Ford hybrid SUV is the only patrol pursuit rated SUV currently on the market. Many of you saw the information on the Chevy Blazer, electric vehicle. That has not gone through the pursuit patrol rating, rate testing yet. The Michigan State Police does that. If that vehicle becomes patrol and pursuit rated, we will consider purchasing that vehicle as we move forward. So if you're talking about not a hybrid, but an electric vehicle, that may become available in early 2024. Like I say, it has not yet been tested for that patrol and pursuit rated capability.
Is that a, would you, could you say that's like probably a cheaper vehicle because it's a little bit smaller? Is that, that's what I'm hearing? No, not necessarily, because it's still electric and it's, okay.
Still an SUV.
Oh, thank you. That's a very helpful clarification.
Councilmember Small?
Thanks, Mayor. There's just a couple of things. With regard to the electric police rated vehicles, one of the things that they're trying to work on is the Bosch rotor battery thing. And they're still sort of far away from that in general production, so that's one of the issues, because it's difficult to anticipate using a cruiser where you have to gun it all the time and drain batteries without being able to regenerate the power on the fly or something like that. So that's one of the issues there. Just additionally, Chief, just for the people in the room, I'd like for you to say a little bit more about the procedural aspects of these sorts of things. When you sign the contract, you sign the contract to mark those vehicles. Those vehicles are not obligated to us per se if we don't do this. And so I wanted to make sure that you said that, because procedurally, we had participated in this before, and there's two stages to it, because once you do the, like, sort of letter of intent to get the vehicles, then you have a certain amount of time to both secure the financing and get the approvals. And I would imagine that's the phase we're in now.
That is correct. The process, as you so eloquently stated, is they have the vehicles, we sign a letter of intent for those specific vehicles. Normally, entities don't come back before the city council and get that approved if it's already approved in the budget. This money is already approved in this year's fiscal, in this fiscal year's budget. So we're at that point right now. So if this is tabled or denied, we will lose those cars. All we have right now is a letter of intent that has a window that closes. So as I said earlier, we must purchase them now to get these vehicles. The fiscal, the very few fiscal year '23 vehicles that are left at the pricing that Councilmember DeBala mentioned is very low. To get that pricing, we would have to lock in via our letter of intent these five vehicles.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yes, I have, would have several questions, but I'd rather just get to my motion, which is not to table and not to deny, but to delay this decision until after our budget, fiscal year '24 budget is completed. That is the motion. Do I have a second?
For the purposes of good order, I will second your motion.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
So there's a motion on the floor to table this discussion until after budget discussions have been completed, the 2024 budget discussions have been completed. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll make sure everybody understands. All those in favor of approving this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Any abstain? Okay. The motion does-
I'm sorry, I'm abstaining.
Okay. So the motion does not move forward. Counsel, okay, Councilmember Fulcher, your light is off. Councilmember Gibson?
Unfortunately, it's still on.
Okay. All right, Councilmember Fulcher, your light's back on.
I'm sorry, would you, as long as we have lots of people that are here that are clearly interested, would you mind going ahead and defining the pursuit vehicle?
Absolutely. So a pursuit rated vehicle involves a pursuit rated for high-speed maneuvering and safety, police hybrid intelligence and calibrated all-wheel-drive system, police program stability control system, 75 mile-per-hour rear impact and crash testing rating highest in class with specifically designed crumble zones, pre-collision assist with pedestrian direction, heavy-duty coolant system with high-capacity radiator to withstand extreme temperatures and idle times, heavy-duty 220 amp and high-power alternator for emergency equipment needs, heavy-duty calibrators and rotors for extreme braking, heavy-duty recovery tow hooks, anti-stab front seat and, for, let me say this again, anti-stab front seat for prisoner transport protection, eronomically designed for safe prisoner transport systems, upfitting of emergency equipment available through Ford, and that's basically just the template that's, or the template to put the emergency equipment in, police perimeter alert system, and this alerts occupants of the potential threat and rolls up windows and locks doors if there's a potential threat. There's also a rear camera that we have so we can see behind us, and we have ballistic bulletproof doors as well.
In a given market, do you know how many gas, like, standard conventional cars are usually pursuit rated? Like, what is your, what is your palette to choose from if you weren't only choosing a hybrid?
We still are limited in product. If we were just getting a pursuit rated vehicle, we could go with the Dodge product or the Ford product that we had been purchasing. The reason that we transitioned to the hybrids was per the direction of the former council. When we did so, it was an extreme, it was significant, I'm not going to say extreme, a significant cost increase when we did that. But that was done in consultation with the council and as, through our commitment to having an energy-efficient, an energy-efficient fleet. So we could buy gas vehicles. Yes, we could. But that is not consistent with what my expectations are for having an energy-efficient fleet. If that's the direction of the council for future purchases, then we need to know that, and we will go back to purchasing gas vehicles.
More my thought was, is there's not a lot to choose from, even if you weren't choosing a hybrid, right? Like, in general, there's not a big market that you're getting to choose from.
There's more of a market for gas vehicles, because most agencies are energy-conscious as we are in transitioning to the hybrids. There still is a limited availability of pursuit-rated, patrol pursuit-rated vehicles on the market right now.
Okay.
Yes, I just wanted to make one point. I want to thank Director Breitweith in terms of the information that was provided about the different vehicles, and note, all five of the vehicles that be, that are to be replaced are in condition fair, normal wear and tear. All five of them are condition fair, normal wear and tear. The maintenance costs averaged last year at $3,627. I, you know, I just, the, we have a trade-off between the kind of, the kind of equipment that the chief wants and the kind of equipment that the city can afford when we have other costs, other priorities, other things that we want to do.
I'd like to call the question.
Hold on. I do want to make a point. I think it's important for us to not imply that this is a request that the chief wants. This is a policy decision that was made by the council in terms of working towards addressing our climate goals and sustainability goals. And in many instances, we knew that going in, that converting our fleets, be it police vehicles or a street sweeper, was going to be more expensive. And so that is the trade-off that we, as a city, have to decide, because police need cars, right? And so we have to choose whether or not our values in terms of the drive and where we want to be in terms of the sustainability of our fleet, and whether or not we're willing to pay for it. And so I think that it is important to note that the prior council did make it a priority and provide it direction to staff to work towards electrifying our city vehicles. And so that is why we have received the requests that we have right now. Okay? And so with that, yep, Councilmember DeBala?
To this point, it's also council policy, how the vehicles are rated, and how many points they get for the mileage and the year purchased and the maintenance costs and all of that. And that's why I want to take, want us to take a look at that post-pandemic. A lot of things are different. Let's just take a look. But that is, as far as I am concerned, the staff is following the policies that previous councils have set.
All right. So I think we can call the vote.
Yeah.
Unless there is a mission-critical question that folks have.
Could I just make a comment as a new council member? Because we weren't on this council when the climate policy was passed. And I just want to, so I want to, I want to share that perspective. I think that when the climate, I think that many of the residents, I believe many people sitting here, would feel that the climate policy is really important at this moment, existential moment in time. But the pinch is real. I know we feel it at my own home. I know that a lot of you are feeling it, and we see it on our vulnerable residents. But remember that crime rates have gone up across the nation, and we also have a time in which we are so lucky to have a guardian police force that is top-notch, and the police chief can't get there without this kind of support. So we're asking for the pie in the sky, and something's going to have to give. We want climate mitigation. We want to recognize that the pinch is real, and we want this kind of top-notch guardian police force that can deal with high and increasing crime rates. This costs a lot of money. That's all I want to say.
Thank you, Councilmember Hanzak. All right. So we are now ready to call the vote. I'm checking with the city clerk to confirm how you want to call it.
Call a roll call vote.
All right, let's do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Fulcher?
Aye, in favor.
Councilmember DeBala?
Yes.
Councilmember Gibson?
Opposed.
Councilmember Seaman?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanzak?
Yes.
Councilmember Small?
Yes.
Mayor Circe?
Aye.
I would like to say, though, that that's exactly how these kinds of things are supposed to go, and bravo to everybody.
All right. Well, to try to stay true to my word of giving us a break, we've been going since before 5:30. We're going to give the council a 10-minute, let's make it 15. We'll give the council a 15-minute break. We'll convene at 9:30. All right. Let's make sure. All right. Let's get back to the party. All right. So the next and final item on our agenda is our budget work session tonight. We'll get a, receive a presentation on the operations budget and capital budget, housing and community development, police department, library and public works. I would like to remind my colleagues that it is 9:31. And in order to ensure that we are able to get through our agenda in a, in a speedy way, I've asked for the staff to go through their presentation. I'm respectfully asking members of council to hold your questions until the end of the presentation. I would also like to remind my colleagues that there are multiple ways to ask questions. You can ask questions during the meeting. You can take notes and send in a master list after the meeting and receive your comments and your questions in writing. We also have calls that can happen. So we don't have to answer them all tonight is what I'm saying. So with that, I will turn things over to Mr. Eubanks, who will take us through this next budget work session.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll hop right in. Just to recap what many of us already know, today we're talking about operations and CIP. We had a precursor to, not a precursor, we had a similar discussion on, on Monday of this week where we discussed most of the internal departments as well as recreation. Today, we'll be discussing police, public works, housing and community development and the library. We'll begin, as we have in the past, with a proposed budget recap. I will keep it relatively high level because we've all heard kind of the assumptions that we're including in this budget and some of the restrictions as well. We'll go into just a brief discussion of the capital improvement budget and then we'll hop right into the operations budget. And again, as the mayor stated, if you could, please hold your questions to the end and our city staff, department heads from each of the departments tonight are available as well as Finance Director Chong. So this is, as I've stated before, maintenance of effort budget. My colleagues though reminded me that is maybe a bit of a, of not, not entirely maintenance of effort in the sense that we have, during our process, we ask that the directors and their staff put together a, a budget that is an efficient one and that allows the continuation of the services at an optimal level. That was the budget that we received initially from city staff. However, that budget was beyond what we thought might be reasonable to council and only reasonable given, only unreasonable given the conversations that have been had at the dais in the past. At the time, we had conversations about keeping the tax rate current. We had conversations about constant yield. And so we understood that and understand from public comments as well, not only today but in the past, that there's a real concern about the city's expenses. However, we are responding to what we understand to be the council's directive about what is important and what are the priorities. And so that is the budget that we've put forth with the qualification. And that qualification is that we want to respect at the same time that balance and that balance is respecting the responsibility that we place on the public to, to fund our services and we want to be responsible stewards of that. And so what we did is a, a part of our process is reduce the budget by $2 million. And so it is maybe a little, a bit of an overstatement to call it a maintenance of effort. It is a maintenance of effort budget with the perspective of council and public in mind. So that said, there are some other qualifications and limitations of this budget or assumptions that are being made. The second of which is increase in insurance costs. And as I've said before, this is advice from the city's insurance broker and then kind of commingled with some other, some other data. The other data being the fact that we realized the 12% increase in workers comp just last year and that historically we have been below in terms of the adjustments that we've seen from year to year in our insurance prices, below that of the market. Our adjustments have been about three, zero to 3% and the market has seen anywhere from 7 to 8%. And so this assumption that we've included here is a hedge against any corrections that we might see. And we won't know until probably the end of May, whether or not those costs will be realized costs. Also in this budget is an increase in wages as well as an increase in personnel costs. Increase in wages amount to 2%. When you include all the personnel costs and compare that to the ECI, all of the personnel costs, including fringe benefits, are 6.4% and almost 6.5%. ECI, which is a metric that many entities like us use to gauge personnel increases from year to year, for the most recently available data, December 21 to 22 is 5.1%. So.
David, I'm sorry. Can you explain what the acronym ECI is for the rest of the people?
Economic Cost Index, I believe is ECI. And so we are well above mostly because of that 15% increase in personnel costs above the ECI. Again, as an adjustment to our budget, trying to take into consideration the, the nuance of balancing a maintenance of effort budget with cost concerns, we have removed interns, the majority of interns from the FY '24 budget. That savings amounted to about $200,000 and we. That savings amounted to about two hundred thousand dollars and we have kept FTEs the same for this fiscal year. So there are no change or virtually no changes in FTEs between FY twenty-three and FY twenty-four. And then finally, we are proposing a three cent tax increase. And to keep that short, that three cent tax increase to the median priced home of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that is the market value, with an assessed, approximate assessed value of four hundred and thirty thousand dollars, means that the impact to a household of that size would be two hundred and twenty-two dollars a year, which amounts to about two hundred, excuse me, two, twenty dollars a month. And those are our assumptions. Lastly, I'll just point out too, just as a matter of the record, that our tax rates have been consistent or constant since FY twenty-twenty. And they were in fact lower than that for FY nineteen and FY eighteen. Here you see the total expenditure for the budget as well as the total revenue. As we've talked about before, that balance is covered by reserves. One point one million in bond reserves and then another nine point four million in other reserves. And those other reserves are listed to the right. You'll see that there are some additions and some deletions, but you'll see that the net difference, excusing the bond reserve, is a negative nine hundred and eighty-four thousand So before we hop into both the CIP and operating budget, I think it's important to just, as a general recap, talk about the structure of the budget and what it consists of. So our budgets consist of two primary sources. Our funds, the one that has most of our operating costs is the general fund, but we also have the stormwater fund and the speed camera fund, which are two self-sufficient funds, meaning that they generate revenue and the expenses within those category, or within those funds is generally balanced and there are no outside revenues that assist either of those. The special revenue fund is primarily, or exclusively rather, grant dollars. So that is a special fund meant to track grant dollars that we receive from a number of different sources. There's the ARPA fund, which, similar to the special revenue fund in that it is money received from an outside entity, that being the federal government, is purpose for tracking ARPA-related expenses and revenues. And all of that totals the, the, the all-fund amount. The other half of the equation here is reserves, general fund reserves. And in that total pool of reserves, we have the emergency reserve, equipment replacement, facilities maintenance, housing reserve and bond reserve. And together, those amount to the general fund, fund balance. And I'll point this out, and I point this out now because as we talk through particularly the CIP budget, it's important for council to be aware of where particular items are being funded from because each has a different impact. As a, for instance, if you are impact, or if you're, if you're talking or discussing changes to, let's say, the equipment replacement reserve, those dollars are reserves in the sense that it doesn't then affect your general fund balance. If you're talking about, let's say, as a, for instance, if you're talking about bike improvements. Bike improvements are general fund items. And if you increase or decrease the bike improvements, you're talking about the impact to the general fund. And so those two things are related, but you know, a part of the conversation that we have been having is about what it means to both expend dollars from the reserve and contribute. And one of the things that we have seen in some of our past conversations is that there's a trend in our fund balance. And if you look back going to FY twenty-sixteen, that trend is not favorable. The trend suggests that in every year since, we have been adding a lesser amount to the fund balance when ideally you would be seeing the opposite, right? These are reoccurring expenses that we tried to account for as a part of the fund. And so if that fund balance is going down, those expenses that come up later will not have enough funds available to, to purchase or to act on those projects or programs. And so the trend here is something that we're trying to account for as a part of the FY twenty-four budget. There are some distinctions in this that are a little bit inconsistent and that is FY twenty-two. But as I've, as I've said before, in that year, we saw a concerted effort to minimize the impact of the budget and the demands of the budget through hiring freezes, through intentional project delays. And so not only did that have an impact on the fund balance, it also had an impact on our ability to operate. And so we can't continue to make those kind of adjustments while also being able to provide the, the level of expected service that the public has of us. And so again, this year, this three cent increase is a attempt to take a first step in the right direction. So the capital improvement budget, what is it? It is, it's not a, it's not a fund, it's not a reserve. I like to think of it as a strategy. And it's a strategy used to identify certain types of purchases and projects that require planning because either the cost of those projects or purchases or the scale of them. And there are some boundaries within which we have to consider these types of projects or requirements, rather. These type of projects have to be for a period of five years and they have to be at a cost at least that of five thousand dollars. And they can fall into a multitude of categories, six in particular. Equipment replacement, information and communication technology improvements, park development, facilities improvement, infrastructure improvements and stormwater management. The funding for CIP items can come from any fund, so any of the funds that I mentioned before or any reserve. And so again, as we talk about this, it's important for you to be aware of the source of money for the CIP programs that we're going to discuss. And then lastly, and we've talked about this both today and in our last meeting, the CIP is subject to the same procurement policies as any of our non-CIP purchases. And we've been able to share that just recently, as recently as yesterday with council and the public, a number of different policies and procedures that we go through in order to consider something and ensure that it adheres to procedures and policies that council have, have determined are appropriate. And a lot of these were presented to council just recently. So the police vehicle procurement policy was talked about and presented to council in April. A presentation was had on ADA sidewalks and compliance that was in March. There was an overview of traffic calming and sidewalk requests in February. Also in February was a presentation on stormwater management. We also had a presentation on sustainability and climate action in January. And in January, we also had a library project update and then a presentation on street resurfacing on, in twenty-twenty-one. I mention these because all of this information is readily available to anyone who might be interested. And so my hope is that tonight, we can talk about the projects and if we have any policy-oriented questions, particularly those that are suggesting that we change it, staff very open to that because these should be revisited on a regular basis. But I would like to talk about the projects and be able to answer those questions, given the time that we have tonight. Here is just a breakdown of the capital improvement projects by source. We discussed this a little bit the other day. So what I want to point out tonight is that a capital improvement project total for this year is nine point two million dollars. And then here you see it by expenditure. Again, the total being nine point two million dollars. All right. So without further ado, we will hop right into the first department that we'll talk about this evening, which is police. The Tacoma Park Police Department enhances the quality of life in Tacoma Park by protecting residents, businesses, visitors and property. The department works to promote community building and safety through community engagement and partnerships. It also ensures the safe and orderly movement of traffic. The department is accounted for in six divisions, the Office of the Chief, Communications, Operations, Criminal Investigations, Administrative Services and Neighborhood Services. For anyone who is interested and wants to follow along, either now or later, the page numbers are noted at the top. Revenues for the department related to the general fund are primarily from the county and in the form of tax duplication payments. Tax duplication payments are meant to account for instances in which Tacoma Park residents pay county taxes, but the services provided at the city level. The city receives such payments for services for several aspects of different departments, but it generally includes transportation, police, crossing guards and park maintenance. These payments are, were renegotiated with the county in twenty-twenty-two and are based on the approximate cost that the county would incur if it were to provide the service. Tax duplication payments to the police department provide it for two functions. One, for the city providing a full-service police department. The proceeds or the contribution from the county for that purpose is four million dollars. And also for the provision of crossing guards. And the allocation from the county for that purpose is two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. Both are provided annually and both are reconsidered every four years. The department also receives grant dollars on a fairly consistent basis or very consistent basis from the state aid for police protection. The grant is applied for annually and is fairly consistent in terms of the amount of revenue that we receive because it is based on the amount of expenses from the year previous. And for this year, the expense is four hundred and, excuse me, the revenue is four hundred and thirty thousand dollars. The remaining revenue sources are from fines, fees and permits and total two hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. The total revenue for the police department is four point nine million. Expenditures, you'll see listed here by division, but total nine point three million dollars. Personnel costs for the division are eight point eight million and represent ninety-five percent of the department's expenses. FTEs for the department remain the same as they were in FY twenty-three at sixty-four point six eight. Operations total, four hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars. A few department highlights. One is that it expenditures increased by about a half a million dollars compared to the projected expenses from FY twenty-three. This increase was primarily a result of increases in personnel. As I said, more than any other department, personnel expenses represent a incredibly significant amount of the police department's expenses at ninety-five percent. The increase, though, was offset by a small decrease in operating expenses of twenty-eight thousand dollars. And one of the programs to make specific note of, or several of them, are the National Night Out, Community Police Academy and Coffee with the Cop. In total, the allocated amount to the police department budget is eleven thousand dollars. Here you'll see a list of capital improvement projects for the police department. One is, one that we've discussed at length now for at least two council sessions, which is the patrol vehicle purchases. I will also note, though, that this is not the, the approval of the, the item itself. This is the approval of its inclusion in the budget. So council will have another opportunity, similar to tonight, to ask any in-depth questions about particular vehicle purchases, the schedule, how those decisions were made at the time that those purchases come before you. The other three items are field radio equipment purchases, which is a reoccurring and regular allocation to the capital improvement budget for the replacement of radios, which police obviously use on a daily basis, as well as some spare when, when those break. The third item is the mobile computers. Mobile computers are for new vehicles and upgrades to current computers as well as antenna. That total cost is twenty-five thousand dollars. And then there's also a small line item of six thousand dollars for the upkeep of the department's electric-assist patrol mountain bikes and the purchase of any equipment and patrol uniforms associated with that. I think this is also an appropriate time to talk a little bit about the speed camera fund. And I mention it in connection with the police because the revenues that are generated by both the speed camera fund as well as the red light camera, which is new for FY twenty-three, has yet to be implemented, but will perhaps for the first time have its full cycle in FY twenty-four. Those funds are limited to public safety. And so the, the, the expenses that you'll see in the budget book that are associated with the speed camera fund are all related to police at the moment. This is, as I said before, a self-sustaining fund. Revenues for the fund in this fiscal year projected to be two point one million dollars and expenditures are conservatively estimated to be one point six. The, the conservative approach here is an important one to keep in mind because again, this red light camera program has yet to be implemented. And so we don't have any experience with it. And so we do not want to be in a situation where we are too eager in adding expenses to that, those line items and end up shooting ourselves in the foot come the end of the fiscal year. Moving on to public works. Public, the public works department is responsible for the maintenance of city-owned roads, buildings, stormwater management systems, gardens, parks, playgrounds, vehicles and equipment. The department provides collection of trash, trash, yard waste, recycling and food waste from single-family and some multifamily residential properties. It is also divided into divisions, nine. The first being the administration, building maintenance, equipment maintenance, right-of-way maintenance, solid waste management, sustainability, vegetation maintenance, urban forest and city engineers. Like police, public works is the recipient of tax duplication payments from the county. For public works, though, those payments are for road maintenance services. The source represents the largest revenue source for the department and totals about eight hundred thousand dollars. This is followed by highway user fees at six hundred and thirty-four thousand. The remainder of department revenues come from charges, sales and fees. The department's total revenue is one point six million dollars and their expenditure is five point nine. And you'll see listed below that total expenditure, the breakdown of expenditure by department. Personnel costs for public works are about sixty-four percent of the total department expenditure or three point eight million dollars. FTEs in the department increase ever so slightly at point zero five in FY twenty-four and that is solely the result of an hourly adjustment to the seasonal employees that we hire primarily during leaf season. You'll also see the operating costs listed on this page, the total being two point one million dollars. I think for public works, it's really important to, because their budget is so large and often the eye of many when it comes to trying to identify places to cut, I think it's just important to note where these expenses go. And so the public work expenses go towards things like paying for building electricity, gas and water, repair vehicles, the purchase of snow removal materials, leaf collection, tree removal and maintenance, right-of-way tree planting, recycling, refuse disposal and engineering services. So you know, for me, when I think about the So, you know, for me, when I think about the basic city services that we, as citizens of any city, want to operate efficiently, these are the things that you want to see work well. And so Public Works is responsible for a lot of those things. Some department highlights. Expenditures increased by just one percent, or sixty-seven thousand dollars compared to FY twenty-four. Personnel costs have increased by two hundred and nineteen thousand, or six percent. But operating expenditures have decreased by about a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars, or seven percent compared to FY twenty-three. And these decrease are primarily a reduction of, excuse me, a result of reductions to the sustainability budget, which provides grants to residents and rebates to residents. And so, again, in an effort to kind of align the budget with what we think council and the public's expectations are, this is one of the areas where we felt we needed to trim the budget a little bit. There's also a reduction as a result of a one-time FY twenty-three allocation for stormwater resiliency studies that were done last year that won't be continued into FY twenty-three, at least not as a part of the proposed budget. I don't expect you to see those items there, but I included just to show you the sheer magnitude of the capital improvement projects that Public Works is responsible for. The gray highlighted item are those that are to be included in FY twenty-four. There are thirteen in total, and the total allocation is two point two million dollars. And the funding sources for those thirteen CIP items come from the Equipment Replacement Reserve, the General Fund, the ARPA Fund, Facilities Maintenance Reserve, Special Revenue, and Stormwater Fund. For FY twenty-four, one point one million dollars in infrastructure projects was moved from the General Fund to the ARPA Fund. Again, with the understanding that we have a lot of challenges to solve. And that one point one was from four different areas. ADA-compliant sidewalks, ADA-compliant sidewalks for the city, as well as SHA, new sidewalk designs and traffic calming, as well as street rehabilitation. There was also a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar amount dedicated to the stormwater CIP. The stormwater, again, is self-sufficient and supported by stormwater fees assessed to property owners. And so those revenues and expenses are effectively balanced. And so I haven't intentionally gone into a lot of detail on these, again, because, you know, most of our concern when it comes to balancing the budget is generally focused on the General Fund. But the details of each of these listed projects, that total two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, are included in the budget book. For, in terms of what is included outside of the Stormwater Fund, they fall into two general categories, those CIP projects. Vehicle and equipment purchases and facility repairs and upgrades. All vehicle and equipment purchases are in accordance with the city's procurement policies. That's why they're included in this year. So the first one you see listed here is the purchase of two trash trucks. The two trucks were purchased in two thousand and eleven, are scheduled based on their useful life, and many of the other metrics that go into these considerations are scheduled to be replaced for two thousand, excuse me, for this year, FY twenty-four. It's also important to note that the repairs for these two vehicles are becoming costly. And so, again, when we start to see the increase in cost of repairs, that is also an indication that it's time to proceed with the purchase of new vehicles. The second item that you see listed for eighty-three thousand dollars is the purchase of a roll-off trailer. The one that we have was purchased in two thousand and ten. Roll-off trailers allow for the transportation of the two Public Works twenty-yard containers that are used for waste and debris storage. Walk-behind mowers. One of the members of the public mentioned that this is a twelve thousand dollar purchase. That is true, and it is maybe a little bit daunting when considered out of context, but we do have a priority established by council to ensure that our equipment replacements are, to the extent possible, replaced by electric-powered devices and equipment. And so the cost increase that might be, not cost increase, but the cost difference here that might be observed by council and by members of the public is accounting for that. Electric-powered vehicles are more expensive than gas-powered vehicles. And then finally, listed as a part of the vehicle and equipment purchases is a purchase of an administrative vehicle for forty-five thousand dollars. Under Facility Repair and Upgrade, we have three items. One is simply the replacement of the front gate at Public Works. If you drive by Public Works, this one won't need an explanation. That gate is in need of repair, it's not operable, and for a number of purposes, it needs to be replaced. The next is a two hundred thousand dollar allocation for the community center, third-floor renovation of some underutilized space just outside of both the finance window and the IT cable room. The allocation for this project will allow for the expansion for both staff and storage. And so that's budgeted for FY twenty-four. And then finally, there's the streetlight upgrades, which is a regularly occurring CIP item for Public Works. And that is just annual funding for new streetlights and upgrades. Next on the agenda, I guess, before moving on, the other thing that I want to point out, and this goes back to the mention that I, from earlier, about the two million dollar reduction. A lot of that came from Public Works. And so it totaled, of that two million, five hundred thousand dollars came from that department. It was a hundred and fifty thousand dollar reduction in street repairs, as well as a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar reduction in sidewalks. So, again, I say that just to reiterate that this is a budget that represents, I think, the minimum that we can do and maintain the existing level of service. Housing and Community Development. Housing and Community Development is responsible for encouraging the expansion of local economic development programming, supporting the development of diverse affordable housing opportunities, and improving the quality of life for residents by delivering programming through its six divisions, which include HCD Administration, Planning and Development, Housing, Economic Development, Arts and Humanities, and Code Enforcement. This department also generates revenue. Its revenue comes from the administration of the city's rental licensing program and the collection of the associated fees. The estimated revenue for FY twenty-four is three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Expenditure for the department totals two point six million. And, again, the division by department is included below that total. Personnel costs total one point eight million dollars and represent sixty-seven percent of the department's total budget. FTEs for FY twenty-four are the same as FY twenty-three. Just a few highlights for HCD. The department's expenditures increased by five hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. That is a number to note because it's a twenty-nine percent increase. However, if you recall, HCD solved some significant, or experienced some significant vacancies over FY twenty-three, as well as some transfers from grants and other categories of the budget to the HCD department. And Councilmember Honzak, I know you asked for that, so we're still working on identifying those transfers and making it transparent to the public and council. Yes, grant transfers. The FY twenty-four budget also assumes that three vehicle leases for code enforcement will be terminated, and instead, the city will pursue the purchase of two of those leased vehicles. And if anyone's interested, we've done an analysis, and that analysis shows that, over the long term, the city pretty significantly benefits from purchasing those vehicles compared to leasing them. The CIP budget for HCD includes a total of fifteen items. Those fifteen items total one point two million dollars. The projects are funded by a number of sources, the Special Revenue Fund, the General Fund, and ARPA. The list of the projects included in each of these categories is listed here. The total expected expenditure from Special Revenue Fund is about eight hundred and ten thousand dollars. The General Fund, two hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars, and from ARPA, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. The only General Fund projects that are not grant matches required by grantor are the code enforcement leased vehicles, the bike improvements, the public space management plan implementation, and the neighborhood commercial center improvements. And, of course, the detail for each of these CIP items is in the proposed budget. However, I think for the sake of time and, I think, everyone's brain power for the evening, we'll focus specifically on the discretionary General Fund items. The grant matches, as alluded to, are, in a lot of ways, have already been determined by council in the sense that we've executed those grant agreements. And as a part of those grant agreements, there is an obligation from the city to match. In most cases, it's a twenty percent match. So we are leveraging, you know, quite a few dollars, eighty percent, with that twenty percent. So we're seeing significant bang for our buck to allow for some pretty significant projects to move forward. I'll just comment a little bit on these discretionary items, just to provide just a little bit of clarification. I've already talked about the code enforcement leased vehicles. But you'll also see bike improvements listed for forty thousand dollars, and that goes basically towards the funding of bike infrastructure. And that includes bike racks, charros, bike lanes, repair stations, signage, as well as events. The public space management plan implementation, that thirty thousand dollar allocation, is purpose for any implementation recommendations that come out of the finality of the public space management plan. And then finally, the neighborhood commercial center improvements. That's funding to support the growth of the city's commercial corridors with a particular focus on attracting and supporting a diverse range of new and diverse businesses. And then last but not least is the library. The Tacoma Park, Maryland Library enhances the quality of life in Tacoma Park by responding to and inspiring the literacy, education, and information needs of a diverse community. The library also operates the city's Computer Learning Center. Revenues for the department total a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. The library also receives a small, very small amount of revenue from fines and fees. That's about two thousand dollars for FY twenty-four. The library is divided into two divisions. The library, the expenditures for that division is one point four million dollars, and then the Computer Center is a hundred and thirty-five thousand. Personnel makes up eighty-eight percent of the budget. Operating expenses for the library department are a hundred and seventy-two thousand, and the FTEs remain unchanged for FY twenty-four. The department expenditures increase for the department by four percent, or sixty-two thousand dollars, compared to FY twenty-three. The increase is mainly due to personnel costs and funding for contractual services provided by the library. You also notice, as a part of this budget, when you get into the details, that there is some shifting between operating expense line items. And that's to account for, or try to more accurately account for, department expected costs and their translation into real uses. And then the sole CIP project is one that we're all very familiar with. That's the Library Community Center Redevelopment Project. Just to note a few items. That project is being funded from a number of different sources. There's seven million dollars in bond reserves, three hundred thousand dollars in state grants, capital cable grant of two point five million dollars, four million dollar allocation from ARPA, and then a seventy-five thousand dollar grant, a digital inclusion grant. And for FY twenty-four, the monies that are going to go to supporting that project are three point five million in ARPA and one point five in bond funds. And that's all I have. So we'll pick this conversation up again, or continue the conversation with the ARPA budget presentation on the twenty-fourth. And I'll pause here and make myself and city staff available for any questions that council may have. Thank you.
Councilmember Small?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I have some overview statements or questions about this, and I'll keep them brief. I think when you're looking at this budget, obviously, the capital budget is a big deal, and obviously, the Public Works budget is a big deal. That being said, there are some things in here that are previously legislated by other councils or previous things. I'm not interested necessarily in the fact that that's true at the point at which we're doing a new budget. I think that's really important when you're doing a budget that you're already working. But I gotta be honest, if people are going to be so upset or concerned about what we are doing or spending, and we know that there are real issues for people, I'm curious about what the justifications are for all of the tree money, all of it. And so I'm curious about if someone could explain why we would be so concerned about not buying police cars, but basically have almost six hundred, seven hundred thousand dollars in tree funding. And that's before we even get to stormwater or anything else. And so if I'm juxtaposing things and thinking about the conscientious nature of trying to be a steward of this town, I'm curious about how come we can't let the trees go wild for a year if everybody's so concerned about it. So could somebody, like, I don't know who is the person that does that, but if we cut there and then we start talking about specific projects that aren't contractually done with regard to the streets, you know, we're a million and a half down already. And so I just also want to say, David, I really appreciate the manner in which you are presenting these things, and I'm not hating on that at all. I think you have done a fantastic job, and I think comparatively speaking, there's been no comparison to what we had before and/or what the budgets previously looked like. That being said, I don't necessarily think that you can, I don't know, because I'm not necessarily trying to say anything that's got any connotations, but I appreciate what you are doing to protect the vision of your staff, I guess is what I would say. But that being said, these numbers are coming down. And so we need to be cognitively candid about where they can come down from.
Thank you, Councilman. And I think Director Braithwaite is prepared to answer your questions about the trees.
Yeah, I think, following along the line of pointing out page numbers, if you want to read about the urban forest budget, that's on page one thirty-eight. In a nutshell, the total urban forest budget proposed for FY twenty-four is three hundred and almost forty-two thousand dollars. And you can see on pages one thirty-nine and specifically how that breaks down. The one aspect of the program that maybe is not apparent in the outlay is it doesn't show specifically the revenue associated with that program. That said, the costs are fairly minimal. Supplies, the largest cost factor, is the services and charges at two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. That includes right-of-way tree planting of twenty-three thousand dollars, removal. That includes right-of-way tree planting of twenty-three thousand dollars, removal and maintenance of trees that are a hazard in the right-of-way of a hundred thousand dollars, and a Tree Tacoma program that was quite vigorously developed by council and staff over the past several years and codified in the city's tree ordinance. So the aspects of the, that aren't included in there, of course, the staff aspects, we have one urban forest manager who oversees the program. That program is facilitated by an intern position, a part-time intern position that was deleted this year, which will be a significant impact on what can get done by the urban forest manager on an annual basis. We lost both intern positions in public works as a cost-cutting measure, the sustainability intern, as well as the urban forest manager intern. The city has a tree ordinance that requires detailed application of the law. I'm happy to provide information that was provided previously about the number of tree permit applications that come in each year. We have tree removal permits, we have tree protection plans, and we have tree impact assessments. Those are all codified in law that have to take place if you're doing certain activities on your property. My understanding is the city's tree law have been in effect since the eighties, maybe seventies, so it's a longstanding program that's been in place and is dictated by city code. In order to change that, this code would have to be changed, the city's laws would have to be changed in regard to tree protection.
Well, no, I mean technically, all we'd have to do is not fund it, and then there'd be a year where it wasn't in there. Like, so I'm not, like, I guess that's, that's what my point is about this. Like, I understand that these are codified things, and that previously, we've probably had knock-down dragouts about these things, and people were really satisfied to make these things administrative or bureaucratic. That being said, a pocket veto would just be, don't fund the area, and so I'm more curious about that part.
I'd have to be, I'd have to point out that there's liability and hazard implications with that. A hundred thousand dollars of that budget goes to tree pruning and tree removal of dead or hazardous trees in the public right-of-way and parks. If we were to unfund it, we would still have to do that work, and we would have to have a professional identified, that would identify those trees and oversee the construction, or urban forest manager would oversee the contractors who do that work. One aspect, as I mentioned, on the revenue side, is the city does, as part of its permit program, you can pay a fee in lieu of tree planting when you get a tree permit. There are two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars currently in the city's tree fund. That was used extensively this year, seventy-three thousand dollars went towards direct planting of trees in private property and city public right-of-way. The program is projected to continue into FY twenty-four and beyond. Again, it's stipulated in city code to do canopy enhancement in parts of the city that don't have tree cover.
So I have one, one question about that, I guess follow-up about that. So if that, even if that is all the case, if we're talking about the distinctions between making sure that we are providing hazard mitigation on trees and programming on trees, if we have a dedicated fund for trees, it would seem to me like all of the funding related to trees should be one-to-one. If you're going to be concerned about all of these things, about the constant yield rate and everything else, and we have this actual thing, is it possible, or how far away from the anticipated levels that you feel like you need, would you be if we did a one-to-one from whatever the tree funds are?
Well, the tree fund is, again, codified in city law, and it's specifically for tree planting, so that's currently all it can be used for. So we could plant trees with the city's tree fund, which is what we currently do.
So let's say we don't plant any trees, and then the first thing we do when we're done with this budget is change that thing. If we didn't put any line item together for that, and then all of a sudden rededicate that funding, then the available monies would change.
In interest of time, you may want to put that on your reconciliation list, and then, you know, as, as the council gets through this.
Thank you. Thanks, thanks, Darrell, I appreciate it, I really do.
And since, Mayor, if I could, just, since we have Director Braithwaite here, if we just want to ask all public works-related questions now?
Sure.
Councilmember DeBala, is your, are your questions related to public works?
Some of them are.
You can go first.
Thank you. I, I would rec, I would, I would like to see the permit numbers and the removal numbers, as you just alluded to, and the permit income. In general, for the next year budget, I would really like to see the, the, there's a table in the annual financial report at the end that lists the number of activity, a lot of different activities, lists the number of permits, the number of the, of.
Yeah, all those, all those tables.
Code enforcement visits, the number of police visits, there's a table that says what the activities have been over, you know which one it means.
Yeah, but for FY twenty-four, we, we wouldn't have the.
We wouldn't have it, but, but we can, for next year, in the budget, I think it would be very helpful to link those, for lack of a better word, performance measures into the sections.
Yeah, my, my assumption is, it always has been, there just wasn't time this year. So those tables are still being done, we've produced them, they just haven't been embedded in the document. My assumption is that as the, as the process goes through, before the budget book is created, those will all be embedded in the document and all those numbers, which they, they show a three-year period of time plus a future projection.
Yeah, so that, that's not a question, and it's not directly related to public works, so I'll, I'll just keep going.
Yeah, so all those, I mean, all that information is available and has been produced, it just hasn't been.
Put in here.
Embedded in that book.
And for the future for residents, I think it would be helpful for the connection to be right there in front of everybody. Public works.
Oh, I did want to say, just on that line with Councilmember Small's previous question, the city generates between thirty and forty thousand dollars a year in tree fund payments.
Okay. Thanks, Darrell, I really do appreciate it, thank you.
Sorry, no, no, I.
I do have another question about this.
I'm still getting organized, I'm sorry. So these are, maybe I could write some of these down and send them to you instead. You sent us the list of sidewalks and roads, and I have some specific questions about what would happen if we did less sidewalk work or if we did less roads work in fiscal twenty-four.
And that's basically my question too, Cindy.
Oh, I thought you were done, I'm sorry.
No, 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 I was, I was putting my light back on.
Oh, okay, so.
It was going to be your question.
So, so I can arbitrarily draw a line and say, anything that's rated up to seventy instead of seventy-five on the roads, and, and then you've given dollars, so I can see how much that costs, and so that part's easy. Less easy on the sidewalk side, so I happen to know, because Belford's in board too, what the estimate is for that, but nobody else does. So if we could do the equivalent for the sidewalks?
Sure, I also just want to point out, and it's, it's a common, a common flaw in, in looking at budget reductions, particularly for infrastructure projects like street restoration. If you reduce from the, from the previously developed five hundred thousand dollar figure, which was developed in two thousand and seven by a full engineering analysis of our roadways, their condition, their length, and, and our maintenance schedule, if you go away from that already projected need, and of course, we haven't even done a, an increase for cost increase, so that was a five hundred thousand dollar figure per year to spend on roads that was identified in two thousand and seven. So there are some years when the city's met that goal, there are other years when it hasn't. So when you're not maintaining your roads in the cycle, we want a twenty-year cycle, so every reduction in, in amount of funds that you're putting into your street restoration fund means that your twenty-year cycle is going to be twenty-five, thirty. As you probably know, the longer a road goes beyond its useful life, the deterioration is much more extreme, and the cost for restoration is much more costly, because you have to end up doing deeper, instead of a two-inch mill and overlay, you have to do a six-inch mill and overlay, lots of additional costs with that. So when you delay your infrastructure maintenance on something like road, roadwork, where you've already identified the program needs, you're just costing yourself significant amounts of money in the future, and future dollars are more expensive, because inflation is continuing, and you also have poor roadway condition, which in and of itself, you know, maybe it increases traffic hazards a bit, difficulty for bikers, whatever, but in general, there's, there's an appearance issue about maintenance and neighborhoods in general, and when you have roadways in poor condition, it definitely reflects upon the community. One of the reasons the city said about this program back when it did in the early two thousands was because our roads were in deplorable shape. We didn't have an annual funding level, we didn't have a programmatic plan for road restoration. So we created that with our annual pavement, our pavement condition index and our evaluation of roadways on a every seven-year cycle. So not to, I'll get off my soapbox, but you can reduce the funds, which we have, but every, every year you do that, you're just costing yourself a significant amount of money in the future.
So I, I remember a presentation that you went into great detail about this, I think it was with the previous council.
I'm sure it was.
So, in what, but it was recently, it was like last summer or something.
And I did a street restoration presentation in twenty-one, and that's in that document that Christine.
Oh, so it's already been changed, okay.
Sent out to everybody.
Then I, I remember it being very thorough in terms of laying all of that out, and so.
It also shows what we've spent year to year, and, and you can see those years where we've diverged from our goal of the five hundred thousand dollar funding.
Yes, and so you can speculate, okay. Sorry, I'm starting to slow down too. I wanted to ask if, say what?
Yeah, man, all night.
Third-floor renovation, remind me, when, when we decided to do this, because I'm blanking out.
That was a project that we had designed with Big Neil Watkins-Hasser in two thousand and eighteen, seventeen and eighteen, so we have a concept plan from two thousand and nineteen. So it's one of those projects that got put in the CIP and then just continues to get pushed out, pushed out, pushed out, and not done. It essentially will establish more space for the cable office on the third floor. I can provide you the concept plan drawing, and again, it's not architectural drawing, it's a concept plan. For those unfamiliar with looking at that kind of thing, it may be a little hard to understand, but we could certainly share that with you. Basically, if you envision the space now from the finance window of the, the finance department's window, you know there's that open lobby area that's unstaffed, a little half, half-high wall, and then you've got the back elevator, and you've got the door, a double door to the cable office, and then the IT office on the other side, and then if you keep going, you go to HCD. So you envision just create, walling off that space that's now open, open lobby and leaving a hallway from the elevator to the finance office, and it basically, it will enclose that space and create cable office storage, cable staff space, and realign some doorways so that that space would function more effectively. And part of it is, you know, cables somewhat down here, somewhat upstairs, somewhat in the, a few other places.
How is that going to integrate with having to move some parts of the cable office because of the library construction? Does it make it more complicated to be thinking about renovating the third floor at the same time we're doing everything else?
It's entirely separate, because I don't, we weren't going to move any of the second-floor cable functions into the third floor, so they, they operate independently.
I, I do have some questions about the trash truck, the trailer, the mower, and I think that you, we already said that you might share some more information with us. I have another question about fees. So it was my understanding that a couple of the fees in public works for this fiscal twenty-four budget were being proposed to go up?
That was in twenty-three, there's no fee increase in twenty-four.
Okay, so.
Recently in twenty-three.
Yeah, I mean, the beginning of FY twenty-three, July first of twenty-two, new, new fees went, are.
Which, which fees?
Bulk trash pickup went from ten dollars to fifteen dollars, the mulch delivery fee went up ten dollars, from forty-five to fifty-five, sixty-five to seventy-five, et cetera. I think our permit fees remained the same, we might have increased one to forty dollars. What else changed?
Yeah, the, I think the council member's referring to the consideration of the increase in the refuse pickup for multifamily property.
Right, so I was, I was getting that. What are you, what are you still thinking about, and what have you rejected?
That was from ordinance change in fiscal year fifteen that had never been implemented, so the city didn't pass the administrative regulations it needed to. The, the code language requires that the annual cost for trash pickup charged to multifamily go up based on the ECI. So we've been at the same fee for many, many, many years because the regulations weren't implemented. So that administrative regulation that's currently being posted will put that into place to track the increase in fees for the refuse collection. It's basically a per-household fee. If you have a six-unit apartment building and you want to get city trash pickup, and that includes city trash, city recycling, city yard waste, and city food waste, it's a heck of a deal, you get charged for every unit except one. So not your first unit, but your remaining, so a six-unit building would be charged for five units and so on. So we have an annual fee that the finance office charges based on the apartment licensing fee. If you have a accessory apartment in your building, you don't pay for yourself, but you are charged for a single apartment collection fee.
And so along with that, a look at other fees in the, over the next few months would, I think, be very, very welcome. Many of these fees haven't gone up in a very long time.
All our fees went up last year.
Okay, I would appreciate getting a list of city fees and which ones have been increased, which ones we're thinking about, and which ones we can think about in the next year, because that wasn't my understanding that everything went up last year.
It did in public works, I don't know of other departments, but it did in ours.
Yeah.
And it was part of the budget book, and it was discussed by council.
The list you're referring to is a more comprehensive list of all fees for the city, or are you speaking just to public?
Well, I, I was thinking about not just public works, correct. And then last but not least, I'd ask, not right now, but for a reaction on an email that I hope you received about possibly increasing dumpster fees.
I didn't hear that.
Dumpster fees.
Dumpster fees?
I will resend an email to you.
Yeah, I didn't get anything about that. Currently, our permit fee is forty dollars for dumpster in the right-of-way.
Okay. And my, my last question, set a question, my last, my last area has to do with the sustainability budget, budget and the benchmarking study. I, I understand that there's a lot of federal funds available right now, but it also is going to require, some of it might require some matching money. And so going back to policy that we agreed to quite some time ago, and had put money in specifically for things that were listed in, in the climate action framework, the first step was that benchmarking study, so I would appreciate knowing how much that is that was reduced out of the budget.
Yeah, the entire benchmarking study was removed for the budget.
Right, but how much was that?
Sixty-five thousand dollars, yeah. And I think that, I'm basing that number on a number that Gina had put in the budget in FY twenty-one or twenty-two.
Right, that's what I couldn't remember.
I just want to, on your comment on the permits, just so you know, from a public works perspective, we issue about a hundred non-tree-related permits a year. So it's not a great number of permits.
Say what?
We issue about a hundred non-tree-related permits a year, so a pretty small number of permits.
All right, I'll send my other questions to you by email, because I know we have a lot of people that want to speak.
All right. Council, are there any other questions? I, I have a lot of lights, but are your questions related to public works?
Yes.
Okay, all right, Councilmember Fulcher.
Okay. Is there like a standard formula that you all are using for determining how much overtime you think you're going to need? you think you're going to need for the year?
Yeah, primarily it's based on our knowledge of the events. For instance, I have that information somewhere. Where did I write it? Most of the overtime, you know, we have some things that are estimates. For instance, snow response. So in general, we plan for three snow events a year. So we just automatically factor that in primarily in the right-of-way division, but also in sanitation division because they are swing drivers first. So we have, you know, categories where we just, based on the hourly rate, assume a 12-hour event three times a year for snow. In terms of the right-of-way support, we support about 15 events every year. So we know how many people and how many hours, and so we factor those in. We also do some assumptions based on emergency response. Say for instance, you know, overtime for our urban forest manager to come out on a Saturday if a tree falls across the road or if we need to call staff in. So we have some emergency and hazard related. Same thing for buildings. There's usually not too many custodial emergencies, but the facility maintenance supervisor is called in after hours and on weekends, so we have some overtime costs there. And then there's some programmed events that we know of where we need to have custodial services. So most of that stuff is pretty well-known just based on activities and events within, outside the community as well as within the, you know, other departments themselves.
Okay. Are the, is the tree fund, is it funding both the trees that are being planted on private and public property?
Yes.
Okay.
In terms of the budget reductions that were made, we did reduce our overtime budget by $7,000 across the department. I do want to reiterate a bit of what David said because I think, I don't know, but I think my budget was probably hit more hard than other department budgets. But we went well beyond the 2% reduction in our budget before we even submitted the budget. We took out $100,000 of standard, really maintenance of effort stuff out of the Public Works Department budget. Those included temporary laborers, facility maintenance contracts, and as David mentioned, the, the loss of the interns positions. And in addition to that, we then had the 2% reduction, which is $118,000, which really got into little bits and pieces of supplies, repair materials, service contracts, overtime. There will be events, if this budget passes as it is now or even lower, where we will not be able to provide service because we will not have the funds available to do those types of things. And in addition, we also had our capital budget reduced both for sidewalks and streets by $500,000, which will have a significant impact on the work that we can do. I'm sorry, Councilmember Fulter, you were in the middle of questions.
It's okay. For the bike projects and, you know, other sort of street projects that are planned for New Hampshire Avenue and Maple Avenue, is it planned that Public Works would do that work or would that be a contracting company?
That would be a contract. It is currently in the design phase, and HCD may want to speak to that, but they've been very successful at getting grant funding for the design development. My assumption is that we'll, they will continue to look for grant funding for the construction. Usually those grants come with a lot of strings attached, particularly for construction grants if we're using state highway or transportation alternative programs, budgets, programs. So if we do get grants for the construction, they will be very, very heavy lifts that require a lot of staff time even though they're going to be done by contract. We typically can't use our on-call contractor form because they have to go through a separate bid process.
And then lastly, with the fee increases that you just spoke about, how did you determine what to increase those fees by?
What we thought was reasonable without having too much of an impact on, on the users of those programs.
Thank you.
Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you. It's been, I guess, a couple of months ago that I asked for a copy of the spreadsheet for the equipment replacement reserve. I don't recall receiving that yet.
No, it's being done by finance. They just balanced the FY '22 ERR, so they're now working on the FY '23 and the projection for FY '24. So that's a documented process.
But the process needs to be done soon enough that the council can look at it prior to establishing the budget where the fuse is burning.
Yeah, I, I, I hear you.
I appreciate your listening.
Yeah, I, I am not the person that does that, so.
Okay, but I trust that you can pass the information.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
I, I think it's well-received.
But anyways, I, again, I'd just like to thank the acting city manager, Eubanks, for looking for ways to reduce our expenditures. But I'm concerned that the equipment replacement reserve is just pushing the problem downstream. And, you know, a well-maintained reserve plans for future expenditures, and those future expenditures are going to need to be made at some point. And it's more fair for future councils to be putting the money in to work towards those expenditures rather than have them have to worry about where they're going to find the money. So that's why I would just like to get the information so that, get a better feel for what, how much, whether that's a reasonable amount to reduce the equipment reserve or whether it's something that we should be looking for money somewhere else rather than the reserve. So that's my monologue, not a question. Thank you.
Councilmember Honda.
Yes, I, I just want to reiterate, I just, I really appreciate that, that both the manager and, and Daryl, that you and your department really worked hard to reduce funding. But like you can hear from a lot of the residents and other council members, we're all looking for where are places that we could reduce, where perhaps it might not hurt as much. And, and so in light of that, I'm just going to share some of the things that I'm, I'm looking at, and I would like to hear your thoughts on it. And, and maybe it's going to come, and if it, if it's going to come in an answer to some of my other fellow council members, just please clarify, and I don't want to take any more of our time in that case. So one is the two trash trucks. Without changing policy, could it be delayed by one year? What would happen? And the other is the roll-off trailer. Could it be delayed by a year? What would happen? Pleased to see that ARPA funding is being utilized for the ADA sidewalks. I think that's good savings there from city revenue. And then the, the other is the third floor renovation of the, the cable grants and city fund. So those are the things that I'm looking, I mean, I, I'm also looking at the small walk behind my mower, but we're talking about small bucks there. So I'm less concerned about that one.
Yeah, the, the trash trucks, we, we push our trash trucks to 13 years, which is longer than most jurisdictions do. And by the time you hit 13 years, that trash truck is not dependable. We keep a fleet of only five, and we need four for the collection. So it's, it's, it becomes kind of mission critical to keep the trash trucks in, in good working order. The other kind of difficulty, particularly now, it's never been as bad as it is now, is the delay time in getting that trash truck. So if we were to order it tomorrow, it would probably be a year or more, similar to our EV sweeper, which took a year and a half. So we're very worried that the delay and, e- even if we were, you know, right on time with our ordering, it would still be another year or more before that trash truck came in. So because, because of that, we, we feel like we've pushed that as far as we can. We are looking at EV options as well as they're diesel-fueled, and we use biodiesel. I don't know if this council is aware of that. We use an 80/20 mix of soy and, and diesel, so we're not 100% diesel for any of our diesel equipment. And we're getting comparison pricing between the two. As you can imagine, EV will be more expensive, but EV technology was really made for trash trucks. Diesel engines do not like to be in trash trucks. The stop-start, the sudden, it's just terrible. So we're really anxiously looking to move into that technology as, as we can. As soon as we get information about costs, we'll share that. We hope to get that soon. We're looking at potential grant opportunities or funding opportunities. Councilmember DeBala has been sharing some of that information with us. So the trash trucks are not something that we have been delaying. We just planned for 13 years. Our roll-off trailer has been delayed. You could look at prior CIPs. It's been delayed for years. You know, we keep pushing it out and pushing it out, and so it will get to the point where it's not able to be maintained or operable. Is that a crisis? Not as much as a trash truck crisis, for sure, because what we would do then is we'd have to use a contractor to haul stuff or use our larger dump trucks to haul stuff. Right now, we set two roll-off containers in our yard. One stores scrap metal. The other is used for street sweeping debris and other types of debris. So we fill them and then we haul them. Saves us incredible amount of money in terms of hauling fees and storage fees. And it enables us in cases like the scrap metal to recycle those materials. So there's associated costs if that piece of equipment were not to be replaced or not to be used that, you know, kind of paint a, a full picture of that. We've pushed that off for a while now, and we're getting to the point where it, it really needs to be replaced. It's a hydraulically operated, you know, type of machinery that gets pulled behind our large dump trucks.
Okay, and the, and the cable?
You know, the cable and the IT space, again, it's, it's something that's been pushed for years a, as well. I think the city may benefit from a whole kind of facility use, office space use, and then a prioritization in terms of what's most important. Do we want to, you know, provide staffing for the staff that don't have offices? Or do we want to provide storage space for the divisions that need storage? You know, it, it probably, it's a really tough conversation to have. And the city several years ago brought in Big Neil Watkins and Hasser to do that kind of space analysis for us. This was the outcome of that. They had a design for the front lobby, they had a design for the back lobby, the atrium fill-in, and police dispatch relocation and office creation was part of that. So it's, it's, you know, it was done many years ago, so it's probably time to revisit that. I would say, speak to the IT and cable people could probably best make the case for the impact of that, that delay.
Can I just add on to a question? I just don't understand. It says cable grant. Is that because that money is coming from a grant to pay for that?
Yes, the city gets cable funds, and they can only be used for a very restricted, often in the past, the city hasn't been able to spend all the cable grant funds. So, you know, the library is a great use of cable funds. This was also identified. So the bulk of those funds are coming out of cable funds, not out of operating budget. They're restricted funds that are in the cable, cable franchise fees, and then a small portion from the facility maintenance reserve, which again is a reserve that's set up to do building improvements.
Can I, can I just follow up with a, it's a very difficult statement to say out there, but I'm just going to say it as, as a, as a citizen who's just really looking to, like, what could we do? Would it be completely terrible for services for the city if we were to say not do one of the trash trucks rather than two and not do one of the police vehicles that we just discussed earlier tonight? Sort of, we want to maintain top-notch police services, and we definitely need to have functioning trash services, and yet we also need to cut costs. I'm just going to throw that out. You don't actually have to respond unless one of you wants to, but food for thought.
I, I think it is a very difficult.
Since you're both sitting in the room.
And question for us to answer. I mean, it's ultimately up to council, right? I, I think Council Director Braithwaite kind of gave the implications of the, the decision, and I don't really think we can speak anymore to it.
Yeah, other than it's just delaying it for a year, and then you'll have added costs in that year. So I mean, it's not, it may be short-term savings, but it's long-term, it's long-term costs. We will definitely need to replace it. So if you push it a year.
But just to be clear, the reason I specifically focused on those things is because just as I would do with a household budget, you actually buy, in this case, you, you literally have a real, an actual cost savings by, by lengthening the time that you use a vehicle. That's one of the few things that you can do, as long as it's functioning and not costing more than it's, if it, we're not functioning, that'd be a whole different business. But if it can do the job, I think that's one of the few places where you can make that kind of cost cutting, potentially, potentially.
If you look at that sheet I sent, those trucks are $8,000 and $9,000 in maintenance costs in FY '23 alone. So they're, they're very, when a, when a trash truck goes down, it's not something we're fixing. It's a very expensive cost. So the cost will go up, the operation, you know, dependability will go down. And again, it's not general fund money that's being used to purchase this. It's money that we've been setting aside for the past 13 years to buy this truck. So yes, we could delay or extend, but it's not any new money. It's not any, any real savings. It's actually a cost because the truck will cost more a year from now than it will this year or '24.
Trying to, sorry, trying to move us along. Councilmember Gibson.
Yeah, just a couple of quick questions. Daryl, I guess, I, I wonder about the, the loss of the interns, and particularly in terms of the urban forests. I've been heard, I've heard, and I've experienced the fact that Marty is, is stretched very, very thin. I wonder if, you know, whether that's the kind of trade-off, whether we could take out, I don't know, what is an intern cost? 10, 10,000, 15?
That particular intern was 17, 17,600 was the projected cost. It was only a part-time. It wasn't a full year.
Right, right.
Our sustainability intern is 39,500.
Right, so I guess I wonder whether that is the best trade-off versus taking out 17,000 out of, say, the ADA sidewalk retrofit and making sure that the sidewalks are prioritized? I mean, I, if I understand the retrofits as what we were trying to do on Goody Avenue where I live, you know, we've got sidewalks, they're not five feet wide, some are four, three, whatever. So I, I think that if, you know, in some cases where new sidewalks are needed, I guess that would not be a retrofit. I'd be interested in maybe seeing if we could shift funds out of that to, to get these interns. And, and again, prioritizing the retrofit thing, that's something, I guess, I wonder if there's any documentation, I mean, on how you do prioritize. I did, looked at the document just real quickly that I got, that you had, had done on that. If there's any more information about where those spaces are, if there are safety hazards? Yes. If it's a matter of a four-foot, and it's not heavily trapped, anyhow, is there a criteria there?
Yes, yeah.
Could you get that to us?
Sure, let me just speak to that. Now I forgot your first thing. The intern, I absolutely agree. I mean, we have been blessed with incredible interns, and Marty really took advantage of his last intern. So the, the website improvements you've seen, that's totally a result of the intern being in place. If you look at the urban forest manager's page, it's exponentially exploded with information. We now have GIS and geo-located policy. The information you get from Marty about tree removal down to the specific tree address type, the bidding process he goes through, that's all as a result of having an intern on board to be able to provide him some space and time to do that. They did the site visits, they did the geo-locating. So, you know, it, it just slows down progress on some of the new programs and additional information that we'd like to get when we don't have an intern. In terms of ADA, the council again decided to implement this program in 2010 largely to avoid litigation and lawsuits that other jurisdictions were experiencing as a result of non-compliant sidewalks. So at that point, the city established a program, and we were sta, directed to implement it. I hoped to have tonight, but didn't, but I will send out as soon as it's done tomorrow, a map that shows you where we've done the ADA upgrades and what remains. And the city made a decision when it first started funding the program to start with city sidewalks, leave the state highway sidewalks until later. Now we're funding both. The assumption at the initial outset was it would take us about 10 years if we maintained our funding level for the city sidewalks. We didn't maintain that funding level. We started in 2010, we're now at 2023. I think it'll be this, two more years if we have funding to finish up. But you'll be able to see on a ma, map where those remaining sidewalks are, are located. So every sidewalk has trip hazards, those exist, but the non-compliant issues are ones that we could actually be sued over, and cities have been sued over.
I, I know it's not really like where you're going with it, but also aren't all the sidewalks being paid for with ARPA money? And like, we wouldn't be able to hire?
These, these two are.
In the past, we've used. In the past, we've used speed camera funds and we've used general funds. This year's the first year that ARPA is being proposed for.
But if we took it out of ARPA, we could put it into an intern. I mean, we could shift funds out.
Well, yeah, I mean, we don't have to solve that right now. But, yeah, but it's important to keep in mind that, you know, and I defer to our ARPA manager, there are rules around where ARPA dollars can go. So if the idea, you would have to find that seventeen thousand perhaps in, from another general fund line item that would allow for that monies to be freed up because it could potentially be the case that you can't take the seventeen thousand from ARPA to fund it.
I did talk with Andrew a little bit and it sounded like it was pretty wide open with a certain percent of those ARPA funds, the 10 million. There's a lot of discretion. We can actually pay salaries. I mean, it's wide open. So I'd want to consider that. Is there, was there really, I mean, I guess, how, threat of litigation? There's threat of litigation all the time. What, how, how is that calculated? Is there some?
If someone in a wheelchair cannot get to a building or from their house?
In terms of its frequency in other parts of Montgomery County or PG County, how often has it actually been successfully litigated? I mean, I just kind of.
I think every time the issue comes up, it's successful. Most recently in Prince George's County, it was a multimillion dollar settlement. And then they had to set up a timeframe to get compliance. I think our goal and the council's goal at the time was to show that we established a program so that if someone did challenge us, we'd say, hey, we have this program. We've got this plan. We can't get it all done at once, but we're working in good faith to do and address the, you know, hazards that are related to non-compliant sidewalks. So as long as we have that program in place and we're working towards that, it provides us, you know, some protection.
That's, that sounds good, but the size of that program could be reduced as long as we continue to chip away at it. Okay, thank you.
So it's 11 PM. And I do want to provide Director Braithwaite a little bit of a reprieve. I would like to ask for, if folks have any other public works-related questions, to please send them in.
I just also wanted to point out that another reduction was to our emergency tree removal assistance, which went from thirty-five thousand to twenty. So that is potentially an impact as well.
Where in the budget is that?
Where in the budget is that? It's nine thou, I'll have to look. It's not within the Public Works Department because it's in a grant-related, emergency assistance-related fund.
To understand, are tree fund, is the tree fund able to pay for emergency assistance the way?
We don't, yeah, we don't.
The way that it was written or no?
The tree fund pays for tree planting.
Okay.
This emergency assistance program that was established five or six years ago by the council helps low and moderate income residents remove trees or prune trees if they're a hazard. We have an application process. And so those funds are used to provide money for that. In the past, it was 25. We bumped it up to 35. Same thing could happen in the midst of our fiscal year next year. If we run through the $20,000, we'll come to you and we'll ask for a budget amendment for additional funding, but I just wanted to point it out.
All right, thank you so much. All right. It is 11:00. And I am very mindful that some of us are wilting right now. So I would just want to remind my colleagues, seeing that there are no more lights, to please submit any questions that you have regarding the departments that have been discussed today to Mr. Eubanks so that we can get a comprehensive list. I have a couple of HCD items, so Ira, your sitting was not in vain. But I want to be mindful of the fact that pretty soon, we're going to all need sleeping bags. Yeah, well, no, I'm trying to save you. I'm trying to save you. I'll put it in an email. But I do want to be mindful of that. Councilmember Small, did you have a question for Ira?
Yeah, just one. So my, my questions are related to the manner in which we are going to maintain the affordable housing framework and the affordable housing framework vis-a-vis your efforts in obtaining additional verticality within Tacoma Park. And I'm curious about whether or not there are ways that you see to mitigate the realities of one and the other because they technically go together.
Sure, yeah. So I, interesting question. I think a lot of our kind of housing development work is not necessarily addressed in the budget so much. It's addressed in policy, I mean, certainly in staff time in the budget, but not necessarily in the operating budget you see. I'll point out a few kind of pieces that relate to that. One is, I believe you saw within the reserve funds, our housing reserve fund, which we've been able to fund and have been able to dedicate some funding to projects recently. We also have a few, you normally see them in CIP really because they're special revenue funds that don't necessarily even require city matches. But for example, we have our TOPOL fund that we have received grant funding from the state for, as well as you did see in the CIP fund there, the $160,000 for the Tacoma Recreation Center redevelopment project, which is being matched by ARPA funds as well and would hopefully go towards a larger redevelopment there. So I think we, as a staff, are pretty excited to kind of dig into some of the policy questions and policy implications behind your question there. And I think the good part is that a lot of those don't necessarily have, they have hopefully budget revenue implications for us moving forward, but not a huge amount of expenditure with the exception of a lot of the expenditures you see in our housing budget are about monitoring licensing, reporting for rent stabilization, specifically in affordability.
And the other question that I had for you is related to the business improvement districts. And in particular, we did get a statement today about the potential of getting rid of the business improvement district for Old Town. I'm generally in favor of the bids. I think that the amount of effort that it takes to bring a going concern into an area is difficult. And so having some people doing that is good. Can you speak to what would happen if that did happen? And/or your opinion about the funding there? Because my personal opinion is that we should be adding a bid for a formal bid for Long Branch instead of doing it by contract.
Sure. So where you'd kind of find the economic development service contracts that we provide are within the economic development budget within the services and contracts line. I'll just point out a few things about that line for FY24 as relates to FY23. You see an increase in that line. That increase is due to two factors. One, we've taken two awards for both Crossroads Community Food Network as well as the old Tacoma Farmers Market that are now in that line rather than in a separate budget item before. So you see a pretty large increase due to that.
Which line is that again?
It is now in the economic development services and contracts line. The other thing you see is that we have made a concerted effort within this proposed budget to increase the contract amounts for Long Branch Business League as well as a holder for, as we talked about, I believe, an account session in November, kind of New Hampshire Avenue and other non-kind of targeted corridors. Or not targeted, pardon my language, but non, kind of the traditional corridors they funded in the past funding. So that's where that increase comes from. And we, yeah, hope to kind of devote those needed services that kind of provide technical assistance, provide marketing, provide kind of the wraparound services that a business needs to be successful and to grow together for all of our corridors.
Thank you, Ira.
And while I got you, even though I said I'm trying to get us out of here, real quick, the neighborhood commercial center improvements that was funded under ARPA has in 2024 become a standing line item, looks like?
Sure.
Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, so I'll just kind of point out historically, that was a standing CIP line item that had been traditionally pushed back every year, was my understanding. We last year were able to fund it through ARPA rather than through CIP. So it was originally last year intended to be a CIP request as well. That funding, as kind of explained in David's presentation, is about capital infrastructure investments to support emerging or expanding businesses within our business corridors. So I think the best way to think about it is traditionally, people might talk about like facade grant programs for businesses. What we're trying to do here is recognize that the facade costs are almost normally the smallest costs, capital costs for business startup. And they're the ones that almost have the least, longest-serving impact in a lot of ways, right? If you're paying for signage for a business and that business doesn't make it, you've just spent five grand on signage. That doesn't work for anyone anymore, right? So we really wanted to expand a program that provided kind of capital infrastructure costs for businesses and maybe was a bit more comprehensive than just a facade program. So last year, we, using those ARPA funds, released our business investment grant. That was about $100,000. To date, we've had eight awards, about $60,000 encumbered. So this $60,000 here, or less than $60,000, would basically allow us to replenish that fund. We've learned a lot over the past year about how we can kind of make that program more impactful for businesses and leverage other funds a little bit better. So we're looking forward to using those funds to continue that program and enhance that program moving forward.
Ira, there's also, I think, an underlying principle there, right? In terms of committing dollars to economic development, given the kind of things that we want to envision in our city. Can you talk a little bit about that and what it would mean from what we would have to do in order to insight and see some of the things that we want to see long-term?
Yeah, and apologies if I'm misreading where you're asking me to go here. But one of the other things we talked about, when I think we talked about the strategic plan in November, was kind of our focus on the commercial corridors specifically and kind of the different needs that each corridor has based on where they are. And that for some corridors, where you have strong business associations or strong groups that are supporting those corridors, you know, a service contract might be the right fit. Whereas for other corridors, really what we're looking to do is provide opportunities and recognize just how expensive startup costs are for businesses and especially minority businesses or businesses from, you know, business owners who represent the community. And we want to make sure represent the diverse business community that we have. That is an expensive startup proposition for businesses. And our goal kind of within the economic development division, especially when it comes to small business support, is about recognizing those startup concerns and being able to, kind of with our capital investments, help both defray those costs but also set up that corridor for future success, regardless of what business might be there long-term. So making investments that can kind of stay with the corridor as well.
Yeah, and I think one of the things that is always important that I try to stress for members of the community to understand that one of the main ways in which we can improve our fiscal health is through really advancing the economic development of our commercial districts. And so whatever we can do to enhance development along those corridors actually will be tremendously important when it comes to our long-term fiscal sustainability.
Yeah, and I'll just, without getting myself in too much trouble, I'll just add a slight caveat to that, which is I do think there's a difference, at least in our approach, between physical development and the impact that physical development can have on revenue, on property tax generation, on all of that, and small business support, which I think a lot of times, we don't necessarily set up a lot of those programs to be revenue generators, right? We set them up to create a business climate that we want to experience here and that can lead to that, and help promote that kind of future physical development growth as well.
Councilmember Gibson?
Yeah, this is part of the conversation I wanted to get into. And we've had some discussions about this. And I'm glad that you clarified different strategies, looking at revenue versus helping a small business. The experience that you've had, it sounds like you've had at least a year or more's experience looking at small businesses and assisting them with, when you say infrastructure, I guess, you build inside that the building, you know, the walls, the tables or?
Sure. The distinction is it's capital investment, not maintenance, right? So if a business, if property, for example, has a broken AC system and wants to replace it with the same AC system, that's not an eligible expense for this grant, right?
Guess what I wanted to go to is the, I mean, but it strikes me that you can with, even with a more narrowly focused, you know, small business support, is you have success. If that business, if that business stays there after two years or three years, then you have a track record. I mean, I do think that that is a metric that I want to encourage all of our programs to do. And I know that you're somewhat interested in it as well. A metric of what has progress, what has success looked like. So looking back, I mean, I welcome any statistics or what you might have in terms of your, the track record with both the more revenue-centered development as well as the small business support.
Sure. And if I can maybe just give a quick real-world example of that. You know, one of the earliest folks who applied for the business investment grant was CeeLo Rojo, right? Who started off in a smaller space in the city, right? Got a lot of support from both our service contractor recipients as well as the city and is now able to not just expand, but take a, you know, let's say, less utilized parcel and activate it in a bigger capacity and generate more revenue for the city.
With a major investment on their part. And I don't know if they got any grant or support from us for the renovation? Yes, they did. Okay, okay. I'd be interested, maybe, is there documents in terms of where the monies have been spent?
Sure, so we can definitely provide a more complete analysis of the business investment grant program to date and kind of what money is leveraged by that as well.
Very much interested in that. Thank you very much.
And where is that? Is that in the capital or in the?
That is in the capital improvement program. That is the neighborhood commercial corridors funding you see there.
Neighborhood Commercial Center?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Okay. Okay. All right. Well, I see no more lights and it is 11:15. And my antihistamine has worn off. I just want to thank everyone for the great presentations and your willingness to continue to supply us with information. This has been very, very, very helpful. And definitely Director Jones, you are the real MVP because you sat through all of this. And we not once, as Director Chung, we not once asked you to come up. So thank you so much. Again, I appreciate all of the staff time and effort to making sure that we're able to understand all of the aspects of the budget. So thank you all. And with that, I'm going to call this meeting to a close.